Hi. Is this new and old? You have them both printed?
Yes, sir. I'm having a tough time getting Word docs here. Said internet guest, right? Let me see, let me go back here. Okay, wait a minute. Maybe I got it. You should probably get off the guests and just go to the regular internet if you can. Well, I don't have internet at all. Down here, right here. You're not gonna get anything till you go to the... I thought I had stamped it. Down here, right? Yeah. And then go to City Rowland's official...
Did you bring notes?
I highlighted everything, questions first.
There you go.
My normal password.
Same thing, same thing.
I think it's your email.
What's that?
It's email, correct?
Yes, your email and then your password.
It's your name and then what? I forgot. At Rollins W Y dot gov, right? Oh, yeah. Yeah, remember, I couldn't even remember. Yes, sir.
Three emails, so... I have a book of passwords. I can't remember those suckers either. Everybody has passwords.
Oh, my goodness. Password on the remote network has expired. Oh, yeah, so now you gotta go change your...
Password.
It is certainly secure. We wouldn't have this problem if we just had this stuff and then... Yes, no.
Will we be missing more trees than we are now?
Well, we're missing a lot of trees with this. I'll just take one less breath in the end. Oh, gosh. Oh, my gosh. Okay, I'll fiddle with this. And is everybody ready now? Okay. I'll call this work session to order. And this work session is to discussion on the employee policy manual draft revisions. And I will turn the floor over to you, Stephanie.
So I'm actually gonna turn it back to you. This is just kind of, I want to get your feedback, your questions, your thoughts. I'll answer whatever you have about it and we'll let you... Perfect. Start us off.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go first off and say, 'cause this is gonna sound horrible, but it's nothing against the reflection on you, I promise. Thank you for your time, dedication, everything. I just picked this up the other day. There's no way I can read this in that short a time and compare it and do my due diligence. Nothing, I'm not trying to say anything bad, but that's a lot of reading to do. I did a little bit of it and I haven't even got a chance to compare, so... I don't know if you had sent it, said it in my mailbox earlier, but with...
I think it was a couple of weeks ago, but that's okay.
I just didn't get anything saying it was in there or I would've come in. Or I must've missed, you know, overedit or something like that. But that's just my honest opinion. There's no way I could do any due diligence on this. I'm sorry about that. But I need more than a few days to go through that and compare it and read it. And I'm just being honest, so there's nothing I can really go through and tell you right now. Sorry.
No, my whole thing is I wanna give you guys, I know it's a lot. We've worked on it for now over a year. I don't wanna rush or even have you guys feel rushed at all. We can spend as much time as we need to do to make sure that it's what we want as a city. So don't feel rushed at all. I know it's a lot, so I know it's a lot.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
So what would be best for me personally, I don't know about anybody else, is if you go through the brand new stuff. What is new new, not what has been changed from the old one, but what is brands make a new policy. Tag your it.
Tag your it.
Okay, so I don't know.
Just move me page numbers and what have you so I can read it.
Okay. So we're gonna have to go, there aren't page numbers on it just because of the way it's set up on the system. So we will go by section numbers, so, and they do go...
Chronologic.
Whatever chronologic, that's a word, thank you. Okay. So you'll see right up front, there is a kind of an opening letter statement. This is a little bit different. We do have one in our current policy, but this is more, "Welcome to the city. We're happy to have you here," is the thing. So that is a little bit new, but it's more just a letter type thing, just welcoming people into the city. Acknowledgement of receipt, we found out, let's see. The receipt of harassment and discrimination prevention policy, that's a new thing there too. We've done it through trainings before, but we added that in just so that we could go through it as we did an onboarding process.
Just a real quick question, so I can, if this says it's a reference current policy 1.15, I can reference that over to that, but is there anything, when you say that, is there any wording at all or any subject matters changed or added in anything of that?
There is.
So to me, that's new?
Yes. So we can go through what...
It's the same policy, I'm talking brands make a new, we've never had it before, it's not part of what we've ever...
Brand, brand new, okay. I just didn't know if word, I wanna make sure wordings are changed in all the, even the old stuff, right? Okay.
Yes, yes. So one of the things, I'll just explain that to you also, is one of the things we really wanted to do is to clarify things. It was written in, no offense to Wendy, in legalese, and I, it's hard to understand legalese. We wanted it to make it understandable to, to D'Lo, me, so that we could make it easier to understand, easier to interpret. So that's kind of why there's a lot more wording, different changes and stuff like that, and why I put it in sentences, so that you can see, just to be transparent, so. Yep. All right. So the new one here is, we'll go to section 1.8, is a supremacy clause that was added in. That's something that's traditional into all policies these days.
Now, where do we, where do we find that?
That is, oh, sorry, section 1.8.
1.8? Five, six, seven, eight, 1.8.
Okay, hold on, I gotta do something here, sorry.
Sorry. Give you a chance to get there. But this just basically says that this manual will supersede every other manual prior to, so that's what that says. If you go a little bit further to section 1.11, that is seasonal employees, that's something we have not addressed at all. It was not, nothing was included about seasonal employees. Basically says what seasonal means, which is something that we had to distinguish after the Affordable Care Act, what is a seasonal employee. According to the City of Rollins, a seasonal employee is an employee that works, can work up to six months of a 12-month cycle. The Affordable Care Act gives you two distinctions that you can have, that either that six-month cycle or... It's kind of hard to explain. They, the Affordable Care Act wanted to distinguish seasonal employees or employees for benefit purposes. So if an employee works more than 40 hours a week on average, if you look at a certain month, we would have to offer benefits to them, except when they are seasonal employees that work within six months. Does that make sense today? Do I say that correctly?
Yeah.
And so that's what this does, is it explains what seasonal employees are for the City of Rollins, that we're going to look at a six-month period in a 12-month cycle. So that's what that is. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. All right, going on. Have any other new ones? So the next new section is section 5.2. This is under our discrimination and harassment prevention section. And this one just distinguishes harassment by non-employees. Basically says...
Oh, I see.
That we will endeavor to protect our employees as much as possible.
Okay, hold on, I'm trying to find it.
Nope, you're fine.
I might, I'm just gonna...
Yeah, just...
Sorry.
Sneak your head over here.
Yeah, 'cause...
Like I said, it's, I've been working with that for a while and you guys have a chance, so...
Yeah, you know where to go. We get lost every time we turn around.
So is 3.1 refer, 'cause I would think it would be like 1.1 would reference chapter one, section one type deal, but it's not.
It is not.
Because we're not, we're not in the old one and this is referencing the old, yeah. And this is referencing where we are in the new one and how they align to each other.
I just thought like this would be like 5.2, right, would be chapter five or something, but it's not.
It's not. And it's because there's so many sections that are kind of, they should be meshed differently. And so we aligned it to make more sense, and so there are some that are flip-flopped, and so that's why, yeah. So it's easy just to look at the new one and...
Okay.
Okay, so that's what that means, it's just that we're gonna do our best to protect our employees from harassment situations, even from people who are not city employees. So that's what that is. Okay, and then the next one after that will be in section 6.4. And this one is record retention. This is something that was not addressed at all in our old policy, but it basically follows the state law, according to the Wyoming State Archives, that we need to retain certain records, employee records, for a certain period of time, just that we're gonna follow that.
Do you know how long you have to keep them?
It depends on this, what it is.
What it is?
Yeah.
That's why it's pretty general.
There's different parts of employee files that have to stay for 100 years, some have to stay indefinitely, some for 10.
100 years.
Yeah.
Is there a specific method you have to keep it by? 'Cause I know that all county, like the clerk of court, where she keeps her records and how she keeps her records is exactly the same as it is in Gillette, but that was dictated by the Wyoming Supreme Court.
Okay.
So do we have a specific method we have to follow in this retention, or we pick any program we want, we can handwrite them, stick them in a folder?
You know, I'll have to look up exactly, right now we have everything in paper.
Okay.
And so, but I believe that the county in particular has put theirs electronic, so I need to check that.
Yeah, the Supreme Court made that determination. So the counties had to go out and spend big money to get their systems flipped, and a lot of them didn't migrate, so they had to do it by hand. So it's, they've been at it for a couple of years now, trying to migrate by hand. So we just wanna know if we have to buy computer stuff for this, or software, or something.
Yeah. So we can, I will look that up and make sure, but yeah.
Oh, my gosh, this seems driving me crazy. Get it? No. I mean, I...
Mayor, are you all set or do you need some help?
Oh, I'll get it by the time we have another hour.
All right, our next section, new section, will be section 9.1 and 9.2. And this one is about information, employee information and privacy. So we added the section about social security numbers and video surveillance. There wasn't a whole lot of, if any, in our old policy about either of those, something that's important that we needed to add in, so that's what we added in.
I don't know how much video surveillance they add. And the first one was written... Wait, VHS tapes?
Yeah, it wasn't there.
Remember those?
Laffy discs or something.
It was a stone tablet that she's...
Absolutely. So that's what we added on that one. The next one is section 10.1, and this is the whole portion of this. We did not have our classifications in the, in our policy at all. And this lays out what it means to be exempt, what it means to be non-exempt, regular full-time, regular part-time, seasonal full-time, seasonal part-time. Just kind of lays out what that means. And we've had lots of questions since I've been here as to what do we do for this, what does this mean? That's something that is, something that we felt like we needed to add in. So, any questions on that? All right. So the next one is section 12.5. This goes back to the seasonal once again. This is seasonal employment recruitment, this is how we will recruit seasonal employees, basically following the same process, and goes back to that Affordable Care Act distinction once again, that it'll be for this six-month period of time, they can only work so many hours, that type of stuff, is what that talks about.
Before you get to the next one, on section 13.1, it has employees shall comply with occupational safety and health standards of OSHA. Does that mean that they're OSHA trained? Do we train them in OSHA?
We are in the process of getting that set up, yes. That's how we want them to be.
It's hard to comply with something that you haven't been trained on, that's... Okay. Just wanted to make sure that the...
So we can clarify that too, as trained, maybe?
Yeah, that they are going to be trained in that, or I think their training lasts forever or whatever, but if they have a card, then you wouldn't have to, need to train them again.
Excellent. All right, so the next one is in section 14.2. So this is, goes back to that OSHA portion again. This meets the OSHA rules of what we have to do when there is an injury. We have to report certain things to... We have to report certain things um to OSHA within certain timeframes, and this is OSHA law. We just wanted to make sure that it was out there, we've had a lot of questions of people coming in saying, well, what does this mean, what does this mean? And we've just made it very clear um there. And the second part is um our our section fourteen point three talks about returning to work after an injury. Um we've also had um some things come up, some questions come up about light duty, what does that look like, how does the city do that? Um and over the years, it's been done differently. We wanted to make sure that we made that clear and made that the same um going forward. So that is our, kind of our light duty process. Um we just have it set up that if uh an individual requests light duty, it tells how to request that. Um talks about um their return to work, full, full work um process. Um working with the doctor, that type of thing, to make sure that um the city is um covered, basically. So that um, and the employees taken care of on both sides. That we can be able to um set up a, a work opportunity for them, if we can. That will fit, fit the needs of um their doctor restrictions. Um and it's very clear, so that's what that's all about in that section, yeah.
So. Light duty as defined by whom? Cuz each department's light duty is gonna be different.
And we have a light duty agreement is what we will put together. And it will be defined by um what their, they'll receive information from their doctor that says, I am, they can only lift ten pounds.
Right.
Or whatever, for this amount of time. And so they would come and fill out this light duty form, the department head and the um. And HR will sit down and fill out this form. That form would go back to um, would actually have to be approved by the city manager, make sure that we can offer that. Um and then it would go back to um the employee. The employee would sign off that that's what they intend to do um for this period of time. Um and then it would become their light duty agreement, so to speak, does that make sense?
It does, but I don't know how you would, I mean, each injury is going to define its own light duty. So you're gonna have, they're gonna have to be like an IEP for a kid.
Yes.
Individual educational program. If you're going to do light duty and your doctor says that's ten pounds. And the other guy falls off the same scaffolding and it says, hey, your light duty's fifty pounds. You have to write individual light duty jobs for each one of them.
Yes.
So is that what we're referring to when we say we're gonna IEP these guys into their own?
Yes.
Light duty? Okay. Okay.
Yes, it's an individual agreement with that individual.
Okay.
So I, I don't see it in there, maybe I'm not reading it, but uh do we have to put something in this? That says that's not a guaranteed for light duty? I'm not, you see what I'm saying, so say you're out on the streets department having to do something, there's no guarantees you can come back to work on light duty. I know lots of employers do that kinda stuff cuz the, the jobs that people do does not allow light duty work.
And that's true, there are jobs that, that can't, and I believe it's in there, but I will make sure.
The city cannot guarantee a light duty position and is under no obligation to offer, create, or encumber any specific position for purposes of offering placement to such a position. It's the last sentence on.
In, in that whole thing, or is it, is it in that, right before drug and alcohol free?
This page, last sentence, and it goes to the next page.
Okay, well, I'm.
So under fourteen point three.
It's fourteen three, yeah. Okay, yeah, the city cannot, and then you continue on guaranteed light duty position. Okay.
Does that work, or?
I mean, whatever's.
No, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, whatever's legal, I just wanna make sure it's legal.
When they say ten pounds and you can't pick up the shovel, that means you can't pick up the shovel.
You can't pick up the shovel.
And if that's the minimum duty work that they have, then you can't do minimum duty, so I, yeah, I get it. Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Before you get to the next one, um section fifteen point one, two and three. Is it worded that way in the old one?
City cannot.
Or is that new wording?
Cannot, then go to the next one.
I would have to look. It's been a while since I looked.
What's your question?
Um section fifteen point one, number two and number three.
Are we there?
I wanna know if that's new wording or um from the older agreement.
Pre-employment drug screen?
Oh, oh.
Outlawism and drug abuse or recognizes illness or disorders.
You're talking about the actual two and three, not the section?
Right.
Okay.
It is not, it's different.
I would definitely have our lawyer look at that cuz. I think that would open us up to some things that I don't want the city to be opened up to.
I, I think this has to be vetted through.
It is.
Them anyway.
Yeah, but I would definitely highlight that for her to look at.
Okay.
Which one, fifteen two?
Yeah, so you have off prom, so it's fifteen one.
It.
And then number two.
Just being in contracts, the wording makes me uneasy.
Okay.
It's the way it's worded.
Alright, thank you.
Um, just, I mean, to kinda piggyback on that, I don't know from what I'm just reading here. Does the city offer a um, like a program treatment and stuff? At this point, do we do that?
We have in the past encouraged people to go to treatment. It's not something that we have paid for or, but we, we have encouraged in individuals to do that. And I think it actually goes in here.
So, so if that happens, um then you, you can write a contract and it's a legal binding contract with employees to, that you can go and call them on their off time, you could do whatever you want. And, and it's, there's major corporations that do this and I, you know what I mean, that uh fall and do this kind of actual deal. So that could, I, I get running it through legal, but if we have a drug and alcohol.
Off duty?
Off duty, or not, a drug and alcohol policy where you can receive treatment, this can be in effect.
Well, it does have the um. If they come to you and say, I have a problem, then we help them out. It's not something where, oh, I got caught, help me out now. Um. And I, and I don't have a, a problem with that and, you know, uh, I don't know if it's specific in here about. You know, if they do decide to stay, they have an agreement with the city to, you know, go to rehab or go to the counseling and have drug tests and that kinda thing, so we're sure that they're following that procedure.
Perfect. Alright. And then um the one down below is um fifteen point four, is the random drug and alcohol testing. This is something that um we would like to, um, right now we do um random drug and alcohol testing for individuals who have CDLs, because that's required by federal law. Um, we. Can get a discount on our workers' comp if we do a program for all employees. And so we kinda left it a little open that if we decide to in the future, we can do that. If that makes sense, so that's why this is written in, in this way. Um it's not something that we are currently doing, um other than CDL licensure, which is an absolute, does that make sense?
Yes.
So. When I was reading this, I had to read it like four or five times, because it blends from CDL license to everyone.
Okay.
And it doesn't make sense, I mean, CDL is federal law. Okay? So random drug testing employees conducted of all employees in a position requiring a CDL license. Move that to the left, now, let's talk about everybody else. Because right now, as I start to read through this, I get, I go, are we still talking about CDL drivers? Cuz it really feels like we're talking about everybody.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only part where I went, I'm.
So just make sure it's very.
Yeah, that it's very clear, cuz CDL, yeah, that's, it's federal law.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, they, they move from state to state to state, not that we do, you know, we're local. Twenty miles probably is furthest we ever drive out of the city. But after you pass a certain distance out of a city and you're a CDL driver, if you ask them to drive to Laramie, they meet federal law. If you ask them to drive just south of town and do something, they're not under that federal law cuz they're home ruled at that point. So you gotta be careful that they're clear about CDL drivers, no matter where you travel, you're getting this. Everybody else, now we can talk about what, what we need for, to do for you or not do for you. Okay?
I just had a question with this, uh fifteen point one, uh fifteen one. Number seven, the city may require testing with the cause of reasonable suspicion of an employee consuming alcohol or using illegal drugs while on the job. Um, the city manager may also elect to use trained and certified law enforcement personnel to determine impairment. So. Well, well, why wouldn't we just submit them for a drug and alcohol test instead of using? You see what I'm saying? Another employee, you should, and this is where I go with this, is, is if this is happening here. It shouldn't be to the discretion of another employee of the city to say, they look impaired, right? Or here's a breathalyzer, right? It should be, we send them to a certified training place or a certified testing place, the hospital, clinic. You know, whatever we use, and they should be the ones doing the testing, and that's my opinion. I don't, I would not want to put this on a police department at that point in time. Cuz it could come into play of a fellow coworker set, per se, at that department, if that was to happen. See what I'm saying?
But I think it's reasonable suspicion. You're, you're gonna turn that over to someone else, you're not gonna keep, you're not gonna do it.
No, 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 the city manager could ha- have them do that, is what it's saying, if I'm reading that correct.
And with what you're saying, you're trying to avoid that conflict that.
Exactly, one hundred percent, it's just avoidance of a conflict, if the city manager says this, and this should go straight into the same thing as a random drug and alcohol program testing. It should be, that number seven should be right in a line with a dr- ru- random drug and alcohol testing program, right? And it should never be, mister, mister Sarve says, Police Chief Mike, I need uh your employee to come test this guy. That's not right for, that's not right for.
For that many.
That many people. It should just go straight to a testing facility.
I, I know at the county, we wrestled with the drug testing thing because it's so darned expensive. And it might be cheaper now, but at that time, I can't remember how many employees we had, but it was quite a little bit. And we implemented something that worked and it was only used once or twice, but I do think it was effective. And that is, like your supervisor thinks there's something wrong with you, and, and, and I'd have to go get that procedure. But then they went, there was, there was, it was very well defined how you went about it. You would go get another supervisor and then go from there, I don't remember, but I, I would like to look.
There were steps.
There were steps taken that, everybody has a bad day, are you having a bad day or? And by the time it got down to it, um then, you know, it, but it was a really. I believe it was a very effective way to uh detect these things, but I can't sit here and tell you all about it cuz I don't remember. But you might wanna um get a copy of that for us to look at.
Okay.
How they do it. Um it's, it's a lot cheaper, but it's just as effective and I can't, I can't remember how it all went, I wish I could, I'm sorry.
The only time I would think that um the police officer would need to be used if it was at a time where they could not use a third party. The third party's closed, unavailable.
Yeah.
That kinda thing, but if we have a procedure that, you know, we're definitely looking at somebody who reeks of alcohol or you know, definitely has a problem, um there should be some kind of procedure to see whether that is a medical problem or a drug problem.
Well, and especially.
Or an emotional problem.
And especially, like you said, if they reek of alcohol and, and they're gonna go get in a city truck.
Yeah.
Different deal.
And, and a police officer might be um for the protection of the other people too. Some drunks are very happy and some drunks are not.
Well, and there's some are careful and some are not.
So.
Yeah.
Jason, did you have a question?
I just, I wonder, uh Mayor Wykem, what you're mentioning. Um I've been involved in the past and it's fairly common practice, there's a reasonable suspicion training. I've gone through that training, and what we've done in the past, and maybe this is what the county did. Is you have a person who's trained on reasonable suspicion that suspects that employee. And then they get another supervisor from a, a different department who's been trained on reasonable suspicion to kinda have a conversation with the employee and see if the two people agree that, yeah, the person might be under the influence. And then they send them to the right, you know, the hospital or the health clinic or whatever it is to get that test. So that more than one person makes that.
Right. Determination.
Educate, educated judgment, yeah.
So it doesn't come back on one person and it's not just, oh, let's send them down financially to them.
I think that, that really sounds a lot like what the county does, something to that effect. I wasn't involved in that end of it. Just like probably we won't be now, but um, but that does sound pretty familiar to me, how that was handled.
I can't believe we don't have a random program, I mean, I understand expense and stuff, but.
How much is DSA? It's pretty expensive, I think.
You don't have to be a part of DSA, you can have a.
There's other ones too.
You, you have different consortiums out there that you could be a part of and you can uh, you can hire agents to manage different consortiums too. And it don't have to be managed um via the city on a lottery draw like, oh, this nu- employee number is, you know what I mean? It's just a random pick, DSA is like that, right, for sure. It's a random pick through a computer screen, this person pops up, boom, done. And the other thing with DSA is, for sure, I, I, I believe is how it works is uh just because you're the, the City of Rollins is actually implemented in other pools as well, right?
Yeah.
So we might be the City of Rollins, X, Holly Frontier might be in the same dang pool. You don't know who the heck's getting pulled, it's just uh, you know, they, thirty people get pulled out of this deal for random or whatever. Where I believe we should just have something managing just the City of Rollins and we should just not, you know what I mean? Every quarter or whatever, however it works, I don't know, whatever policy's decided at that point. It's just a random drug and alcohol testing.
You have to compare costs, if we have a local company who's able to do it, I'd rather do that too, depending on the cost.
And we do currently with our CDL, we do have the consortiums, is that how you say it?
Consortium?
Yeah, yeah. Um so we do have that um through our vendor too. So we don't, we don't pick them, because I won't wanna be part of that, so.
Do, do we have enough employees of that, um that, of that, that? We have our own group or, or is the group there now in, in this consortium?
We actually have our own group. We have so many from our list, so I will update their, their list of individuals who have CDL licensure on a quarterly basis, any new ones that come in, any that leave, and then they give me a select group. I think it's twenty percent each, each quarter.
May I add a few more things?
Yes.
So. There's a company in town we use for urine tests, whenever one of the officers is involved in an accident or injured in any way. The, the state li- uh insurance group we use, LGLP, requires a urine test. So every vendor vendor, every time somebody gets hurt in any way, employees of the police department have to go take a urine test. Also, in terms of police officers testing people for under the influence. Any officer is, is highly trained on alcohol. Anything else under the influence, uh we have specially trained police officers called Drug Recognition Experts, or ERVs. Ours is Lieutenant Franks, in fact, he's also an instructor and teaches around the state. So he has been specially trained uh to detect physiological signs, to determine whether somebody is under the influence and what that may be. Everything from pupil sizes to um, temperature to blood pressure, different tests that he, he can perform. You know, whether we wanna use something like that just if an employee might be under the influence, as opposed to an employee who might be under the influence and operating a vehicle are two different things. Uh, and he typically conducts his tests at the hospital in the emergency room and they usually conclude with a blood drop.
Jared was part of designing this process too, so, which is very.
Okay, thank you. Super thanks. Thanks.
Alright. So the next new one is, looks like it's um, sixteen point five. Um.
Well, sixteen, sixteen five.
I see fifteen five, fifteen six, seventeen.
And all of those have to do, do you wanna go through all those individually? The drug testing, I didn't.
They all have to do.
Yeah. Prescription drugs at work, we don't have that. It just, we didn't have that before. It just says that if um, an employee needs to use a prescription or non-prescription drug, they just need to, if it's going to affect them, they need to let us know. So we're not.
Okay. No, you're fine.
If they're not supposed to drive vehicles, they shouldn't be driving our vehicles, even if it is prescribed to them, if that makes sense. Record keeping is, it just talks about, and this is law that those um, records need to be kept in um, in test results and that they're separate from their employee files. They're in their medical files, separate in HR. We keep them in HR. Um, retesting, um, just kinda goes through. That if they have a positive test result, um, um, the retest can be expensed by the individual if they wanna be retested, um. And we just go through that process, so to speak. Alright. Is that answer? Okay, so going on to sixteen point five, um, this is about violence in the workplace. Um, so it just talks about the city offices being open to the public, um, villa, that visitors should be following protocols so that we can all be safe. Let's see.
Where, where would I find the protocols?
Yeah.
So, let me go back and we'll read it. I turned too many pages all at once. So city offices are open to the public during determined business hours. This includes any after hour meetings as required by city ordinance, state and federal law. All visitors should follow the established protocols. I would assume that would be federal, state and law. Do you want those explained?
Okay.
To ensure safety. So following federal, state and local laws for violence.
And that's all the sections right above that sixteen one through that.
Threatening to violent, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So the next one I think that's new that I see is, um, section nineteen point two. This talks about um, payroll and the payroll schedule. And this basically says non-exempt employees are required to complete a time card each paid period. Um, exempt employees don't record their hours, um, because they're paid on a salary basis. Um, they must be, their time sheets must be submitted. Questions on that? It's just something we just had not explained before. People just assumed that they needed to do that to get their time sheet in. That's all on that one. So the next one that comes in is section twenty point three. So this is remote work, telework, um, something that's come about since nineteen ninety-eight when this was originally put out. Two thousand eight, I guess, when it was revised. So we just go through and we define um, remote work and telework. Um, basically says that um, a telework agreement can be given um, by the city manager, but not something that um, no one's guaranteed to be able to have that. It's something that would be discretionary at that time. Um, actually, this is an interesting one, so I think we should go through this one, if that's okay. It's cause it's new. Um, basically it says the city defines remote work as an agreement where the employee works exclusively offsite. And telework is defined as a work arrangement where an employee works a combination of both offsite and onsite. Um, remote work or telework are voluntary work, work alternatives and may be appropriate for some employees and some im- positions, but not all employees and not all positions. And so the thing that we wanted to get with that is that there are some positions that just can't be done remotely. They just, a police officer can't be a police officer working remotely. They can't cover the street. It's not gonna work. Um, and then there's also um, just a little bit of discretionary in there that some employees would be successful at that and others would, they need more day to day interaction with, with their supervisor. And so there's a little bit of discretionary in there also. Um, going on, certain employees, um, certain categories of positions are ineligible for remote teleworking due to the nature of the job. Um, for positions eligible for remote work or telework, the decision to allow it is on a case by case basis, taking into consideration and evaluation of the likelihood of that employee succeeding in a remote or telework arrangement and an evaluation of the supervisor's ability to manage remote or telework workers. Um, remote work and telework opportunities may be allowed on a limited basis and must be pre-approved by the department head and city manager prior to remote or teleworking. Um. Em, employee department head and city manager will be required to sign a remote telework agreement with the city of Rollins consistent with this policy. Any questions about that? It's, it's pretty, left pretty open, but at the same time has those restrictions that it, there is a process that has to go through and it has to be done prior to that actually happening too, so.
Have there been considerations about when this person's uh, working from home and trips over their dog and falls down the stairs?
We have not talked about that, but that would be something that we would need to include into that because I do know that workers comp has a little bit of things going on as they're trying to figure out um, this whole new world, if that makes sense. Um, the city obviously can't be responsible for um, a telework location, but at the same time, they are responsible for that employee on that time. And so there's this balance going on in the courts right now. And so that would be something that we'd have to put into that agreement.
I just know that's been out there on other, other places have had trouble with that.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up, cause that would.
That just sounds crazy to me. I'm sorry, I'm like, so you're saying there can be a workman's comp, possibly a workman's comp case filed because someone walks down their dang hallway and trips over a dog in their house? And if that's the case, I wouldn't even think about it.
You're uh, or it's just a gray area. They're your employee. There's a certain amount of hours they've agreed to work. Now they're hurt.
Oh my gosh.
I don't know.
I'll strike that out.
That's what I say, super gray area, you know?
Yeah, it's very gray.
Let's let that play through the courts for this.
You see this being used mainly like in the, the COVID situation? Not, um, you know, my daughter's sick, she needs, I, I'm a single mom type of situation, or could it be used in that as well?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be, well, we have that little section right below, that employees cannot use remote or telework in place of sick leave, family medical leave acts, workers comp or other types of leave. So if they're homesick, they should, they should stay home and take care of themselves. So we want to encourage that. Um. But there are situations like COVID that brought up that need and there are some positions that would be able to function in that. Um, it's, it's kinda just, we're figuring it out as we go.
Can you give examples of those positions at this point in time possibly? Just so we kinda got a idea.
So I would think, um, I don't know, I, it's hard for me to even think through some, maybe like an IT position could work, a hybrid position. Um, where they could work remotely for half the week and here half the week or something like that. That could be a position, that could be a telework position. Um, maybe um, I, HR may be a position that could do that. I don't know. Um, if there's projects that are, that they could work from home through Zoom or something like that. Maybe an engineer that can do work at home portion of the time and be here a portion of the time. It, it really would be case by case and depending, even project by project could be even, so.
Okay. I just wanna try and get a.
Yeah. But there are some things that we definitely have to define as we, as we put together that if we go forward with this, put together that telework remote agreement.
Never thought.
All it takes is lawyer.
Yeah. Wow.
And for legal, we'll have some things to say about that one too, when they, when it goes through legal.
Well, what I'm saying is, all these bizarre fringe things, all it takes is a lawyer to make the things that, oh, they'll never hap- happen, you know? No, no offense to lawyers, but God bless them.
Being paid, obviously.
I mean, it just, you just don't know.
Yeah.
And, and in this type of thing, it really does need to cover everything imaginable, just because there'll be things that will still happen that no one imagined, but best we can do is that.
And definitely when we put that teleworking agreement together, if we end up going forward with this, that would be something that would definitely go through legal to make sure that we cover our bases.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. And the one on the bottom, um, twenty point six, emergency closures. And this one is something that just was not defined at all in our current policy, so. And we've had a couple this year already. Alright. So vacation and sick leave, let's see. So we're gonna go on to a section within, um, section twenty-one point three, under vacation. A lot of the beginning of that, like the accruals and all of that are, were in there before. They have not changed. Um, but going on to the back, um, this is a program that we, um, and we may have Jason come up and talk about this. Um, we've, we've found over the years that we have a high liability of um, vacation out there. Um, I think two years ago, they did a buyout program or payout program to try and get that liability down. This is a program that, um, Jason had had in a previous area, um, and we thought it was a great, a great option. Um, kinda balances two things together. One is it, um, it gives employees the opportunity to get those um, amounts down that they have on the books of vacation out there. Um, but it also encourages them to take vacation. That's the one thing that was really important to me. Oh, I'll just go through the program and then I'll tell you why. Um, so the program is such that an individual can um, choose opt to um, buy out some of their vacation accrual. Um, at the same time, they have to take vacation at an equal or greater amount. So, um, for instance, if someone wanted to go on a vacation for, well, Jason uses hunting, so he wants to go hunting. So he think, he says, okay, I have two weeks there. If I go for a week of hunting, then I can buy out a week of hunting and I'll have the, the funds to go hunting. Does that make sense? Um, this is all from their accrual, from his accruals. Um, it's all stuff that had been earned. Um, and so that's the theory of it. We had had to change it a little bit because of constructive receipt, thanks to Tom and his accounting. The IRS has rules and we have to follow the rules. Um, but that's kind of what the program is. Um, so right now, the way it's written is an individual would have the opportunity, if this goes forward, this is totally, this totally new program. Um, the individual would make a um, request, so to speak, the last week of December. That request would go into payroll. Payroll would um, process the buyout portion of that. Um, constructive receipt says, and this is why this is it, this is, that um, the IRS wants their money as soon as the option is there. And so the option would come there January first, first payroll, and so we would need to pay the IRS right upfront. Does that make sense? Um, whether they're taking their vacation in September or in January, we have to pay that upfront. And so we would pay them the amount out, they would take their vacation throughout the year, um, and then in an equal amount. Does that make sense? I'm not explaining this very well.
No, I'm not explaining.
If the person, um, finds another job in between the buyout and his vacation, does he have to pay back the buyout?
We would be paying it out anyway because it's accrued vacation. They, it would be paid out anyway.
So is that, what's, what's the current policy now?
Right now, there is no buyout policy at all. We, they just have a limit of two hundred and forty hours that they can accrue.
Cause, cause we caught that up. Cause at one time it was a lot and it was out of hand and so I, this is what my memory serves me and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we bought that out to get to zero. And then everybody started over and to prevent us from having these astronomical amounts, we put a limit on it.
Yes.
The limit was actually there before, we just had not enforced it.
Exactly, that's exactly what it was. It was not enforced. It was paid out, it was actually paid out prior to, I think us even taking off, or well, it was right after we took office.
It was cleaned up one time about four years ago and then again about two years ago when we first got in office, Chris.
Yeah, it was.
We, uh, department had to get a report, every payroll on where our employees are with sick and vacation time. And I had to call one of my employees last week because their, you know, records it shows total hours prior to payroll, two hundred and forty. Accrued, zero. Used, zero. So they're losing vacation, you know, every week. We're, we try to encourage that not to happen, but just going back to give you history where I came from, this started fifteen years ago at another job where we had an employee resign after like twenty-five years. And the check we cut for that person, cause it was, we paid a hundred percent sick leave and a hundred percent uh, vacation. We didn't fill that position, which was a pretty important position for like six months, because we didn't have the money, because we just cut him a check. So part of why we implemented that then was to reduce the liability for the city. But the other part of this, so what we did originally was, it was just a vac- vacation buyout. No requirement to take vacation. So what we found is all of our employees started buying out two weeks vacation every year and then five weeks go by and they don't take vacation. Well, we encourage people to take vacation. I'm on vacation this week. Um, and, cause it's important to take that time away, spend time with family or whatever you wanna do. And so we had a new manager come in and said, well, I like the buy, buyout option, it reduces our liability, but with that, from now on, we're gonna, let's do a, in order to buy out, you do a vacation time off request. So if you wanna buy out one week, you do a time off request for, you know, April, first week of April, whatever it was. Um, we didn't have, uh, we, so I know things are different with, with IRS here. Maybe we weren't doing it right back, back there. In fact, I emailed them to say, hey, you might wanna look into this. Um, but anyways, um, I think it's to promote people to take vacation as much as it is to reduce the city's liability. So it's kinda works in a few different ways.
So, the question I would have is, they want their money upfront, or, or as soon as they can possibly get it. But if someone schedules their vac- But if someone schedules their vacation in September, right? And they know what their accrual rate's gonna be by the time they get to September. And per Councilman Lumen's question, what if they quit in August? You've already sent the money to them, you've already sent the money to the IRS.
Usually just forward them, you know, their actual buyout without the taxes removed, cause you've already removed the taxes. So the way I would en- envision this is, is it would be just like a paycheck that would go out. Taxes would, would, would go to the IRS, and we would hold that until either they leave or they go on vacation, and then you could pay it out at either of those times.
They're not taxed again on that vacation.
They're not taxed again, they're just taxed the one time, but, but the IRS, see, we ran into this in a previous job, you know, where we could choose to buy out or not choose to buy out. It was just an option, if you wanted to take it or not. Well, the IRS came in and said, when you have that option, if you, i- if you do take it out, you pay the taxes. But if you do not take it, you've just deferred the taxes to where you do take it. And they're saying they want the, the taxes when, when it becomes available. It, it's called the constructive receipt doctrine.
So when they earn vacation time that has a monetary value.
Yes, so.
They want the taxes off of, as they earn it.
Earn the, earn the vacation, and if you take it during the natural course of, of business. Okay, that's when the check goes out to you at that point, you know, within your, your check that you, you took to vacation. We pay the taxes at that time. But if you get actual compensation above that, you know, so if you are cashing out vacation in, into a check, or if you could receive a bonus check and you decide not to for tax purposes, you, you'd rather defer the bonus. What the IRS says is when it's available to you to cash out, they want their taxes at that point.
Is that on the city to do that, or the employee to do that?
That's on the city to do that.
So our thinking, um, with the process is that if an employee would elect to choose to do this buyout program. We would actually pay the taxes and pay them that money in January. And they would be responsible to save that money till their trip. But they would have to have, um, a scheduled time off throughout the year to match up with that, does that make sense?
It does, it still doesn't answer my question as to, let's say you paid them and they were gonna take their vacation in September and they quit in July. They haven't accrued that time yet till September, you've already paid them and the taxes have already been sent to the IRS, how does that money come back?
Okay, good, good question, I'm glad you reiterated that. We are requiring that they have that money in their account as accrued on the day that we pay it out, so they have to have accrued it already by January first. Not gonna stay out in the future. It's on the books, and we actually do also require in the program that they maintain a bank of eighty hours above and beyond. So they still have two weeks in there in case they have other things going on, so like if they get, I don't know, have to go take care of their family member and they're gonna be gone for two weeks, and so we're, they have that bank there just in case. So there is a, a bank there, and it's already accrued, yes, thank you for.
So it's vacation they've already earned, that they're getting paid for?
It's vacation already earned, yep.
Yes. So I have, uh, some questions on this schedule you have right here of payouts and, and stuff like that. I do understand like the fire department works twenty four on, twenty four off, so that's kind of a little different. What's the difference between sworn officer dispatch and, uh, all other employees? What, I, I, I mean, I'm not trying to say nothing bad, I'm just wanting to know why. The difference would be fifteen days, one through five, or just three weeks to two weeks on one through five?
I am glad you asked that, if you will turn to appendix A in the back. This is something we spent a lot of time on trying to, actually it's appendix B, um, in the back. To try and reconcile, because that's the question I have, I'm like, why do sworn officers and dispatchers get a higher accrual rate than I get?
Appendix what?
Yeah, appendix B.
It's all the way in the back?
All the way in the very back.
My appendix B is blank.
You should have a page in front of the book.
Second page to the last.
Okay.
Okay, so it should look like this.
Okay, I've got it, thank you.
And what we wanted to do, one of the things that, um, that we knew right at front was that, um, our dispatchers and our officers, they do not get holidays. Um, they're, they work those ho- they work twenty four seven, if that makes sense. And so we wanted to map it out and make sure that it was all equal. So we went through, um, if you'll see here on the bottom, the vacation accruals. Up on the top, it says a designated or floating holiday. And you can see across this, across the top, we have police at, police at six, dispatch at six, um, fire at twelve, and all other at eleven. Now, I'm gonna go off of fire because they do weird stuff with their, with their schedules. Because they're on that twenty four or forty eight Kelly schedule, it's, it's really weird and I would have to pull Ben here to explain it to everyone, including myself. Um, but we're gonna just stick with the police, dispatch, and all other. So if we go down to this next section right here where it says vacation accruals, um, on one to five year service. We divided those rates into eight hour days, is what we did. And changed this up here into actual days, as opposed to hours accruals, all those numbers, tried to get it all equal. Um, and so when we, if you go across here, um, police get fifteen eight hour days of, um, vacation accrued every, every year. Um, dispatch the same, um, over here, all other week, other employees get ten. Um, if you add in the holidays that we get, it actually equals out to twenty one on the bottom, yeah.
So.
Yeah. It took me a lot to get to.
No, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but what is the compensation for working a holiday? What is the compensation? Hourly rate, is it one and a half times, do they get, do they get an overtime pay for working that holiday? Because I work a job, okay, and if I'm scheduled to work a holiday, same as probably you all too, right? You work that holiday, you just get compensated for working that day. You don't get extra days off for accrual of vacation because you have to work that holiday, right? So does the city, right now, I guess, Tom, but you're, you're a finance guy too, what does the city pay for working a holiday?
Hey, actually, do you wanna come up, Mike?
I, I'm just, I, I just wanna know, I'm asking financial right now. For the, I, I mean, I got some concerns with this, right, I mean, but right now, do we pay a?
We have not had anybody within like city hall, general government. Outside of first responders, we haven't had anybody that's worked a holiday.
Okay.
And so we haven't really been faced with that as of yet, but you're right in that, um, police department, fire have to work the holidays.
Do, what's a compensation?
Is that they, they don't get paid holiday pay, they're getting paid the same to work Christmas as they did a week before Christmas. They get floating holidays that they can then take during the year at their choice. So on one hand, they're getting compensated with the same number of days off as everybody else. On the other hand, it's not really quite fair if you have to work Christmas and then you just get to take another day off.
I, I am an integrated.
Where we're at with that. There was a misconception going into this that I don't totally understand, that the police were earning more eve than everybody else. And I think that's what Stephen was trying to explain right there. When you look at it and even it out, a police officer, dispatcher, public works employee are all earning the same number, same amount of holiday, of vacation days. So we still have dispatchers and police officers that are working Thanksgiving, they're working Christmas, they're working all the other holidays that, that typically are, people are spending with their families, and the only compensation they're getting for that is some other day off at a different time.
So my, my thought is this, and, so what happens, okay, what happens when, say, Christmas comes, okay? And public works has to go out and plow streets because we get this major snowstorm, what do they get paid? No extra compensation?
Well, they might be making, would they be making overtime if it was?
Well, but then it would have to be over forty work hours.
Okay, so, so I, I mean, this is just my thought, okay, cause I, I work in an industry where it's private. It's a private sector and I, I believe, I believe everybody has to be treated fairly, I agree. If you work, uh, a Christmas to Thanksgiving, it really isn't nice to have to take off an extra day, you just get substituted an extra day. Well, you just didn't get to spend it with your family. I honestly, my thoughts are, we need to come up with a holiday pay type schedule. Everybody at one to five years of service gets the same amount of days, there's no, no, uh, deviation of this, because you work for one department, you get a little more, because, you know, I, I really would like to see, and my thought is just a holiday type pay schedule. Um, most places are uniform across the board, they get regular pay plus overtime pay for working that. I mean, that's just most uniform, so it actually works out to like two and a half times your pay, honestly, for the eight hour shift or whatever, right? It's, it's just you're working, that's how most places I've ever seen do it. But, uh, I'd rather see that and everybody be equal across the board, that's just my thought.
So instead, making sure that I understand, instead of having the different accruals for different things, have one accrual and then holiday pay separately in a time and a half or whatever, it may be that type of thing.
Yes, ma'am, because there's no, there's no compensation, cause I, I mean, i- if I had to work, scheduled to work Christmas and there's no compensation, this is my thought. I'm gonna go ahead and just take the day off, right? I'm gonna take a paid day, if I had to take a vacation day, I'm just gonna take a paid day and spend the time with my holidays. This encourages this not to happen, by going to a hu- a schedule, a, a paid schedule, ti- you know, where, where you get extra money for working that, and i- it's actually a, more of a benefit to the person in, that is working that. Instead of, like Mike said, or, or Chief Ward says, well, they just get an extra day later on, they don't really, you know? Cause I mean, that's exactly how I work, right, if I'm scheduled to work a Christmas, a Thanksgiving, a New Year's, uh, you know, uh, Easter Sunday, or whatever our holidays are, that's listed on our ske- holiday schedule. I'm expected to be there, but they compensate you for working those days.
I, I agree with that, I, I don't, you know, a, a day for a day doesn't work when it's Christmas day or Easter day or whatever, so. Some might wanna think about that, that's a good thought.
Okay, we'll put some of them together for that.
There is a couple of concerns, which would be if we offer overtime for police, fire, are we gonna offer that across the board, how will that affect the budget as far as overtime? Is it going to be time and a half, is it gonna be double time? What do other police departments do, do they compensate for?
They do, it's usually holiday pay, and it's usually just like time and a half. Where I came from, we had all kinds of different, different pay, emergency pay. Typically, holiday pay was time and a half, and if it fell under your day to work and you worked, you'd get paid for it.
Yep, would that also help in, perhaps in hiring police officers as well?
I don't think that would be like a deal breaker.
Deal breaker, but at least.
Like a strong selling point, but yes, it would.
Councilman Wise, we're, we're gonna have to cut this off in just a couple more minutes.
The other thing with a holiday pay is a lot of times, like you work an eight hour shift, right? So if I'm more, I'm scheduled to work an eight hour shift, say they do put in twelve hours, right? You're really only making, it, it's, it's weird how it's split, so I would get twelve hours of regular pay, but I'd get a holiday pay for the eight hours, just your regular shift, that's how most of it actually works. So where, where I've always seen it, so I think, uh, if we put everybody on an equal scale, years of service and everything, and then offer that across the city, because, you know, here, the, that's, to me, that's not right. You're not giving, you're, you're giving up a lot for your, your time, so.
If you end up working by some circumstance, a, at Christmas or something, that should be treated one way. Where this is, um, this has, I mean, we're not gonna shut down police stations, so.
No.
Where we know that's gonna happen, maybe we could look at that a different way, but I, I haven't thought about that a lot, but that, you do have a good point.
I'll work something up then, then.
It's not fair, yeah. Okay.
So obviously, we've only made halfway through.
That's okay.
It's a lot.
You let me know when we wanna meet again and do this again, this was great discussion, and I'll write up these, these changes.
Hal- halfway through ain't bad when it's this.
It's a big thing, so, thank you for your, your input.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your word. All right, we're gonna have a recess for ten minutes till we start the meeting.
The meeting will come up, I don't know when it will be along.
Cause I can't have, I just.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the mouse.
Okay, so it should be, if you just refresh, you should, I should be good. Just refresh, I just opened the meeting.
Time.
I think it's working.
Do we have to click join meeting?
We just came up.
Are you good now?
I'm good now.
You guys all good now?
I think so.
Internet and everything?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And Mayor, you're not?
No, but I'm good, I've got the other silly mouse.
On my computer, my work computer, that thing really does work. The mouse goes, literally, it'll just click.
All right, then, are you ready? You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, I will call this meeting to order, it is seven thirty. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, next thing on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steven, Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lubin.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw. Councilmember Jacqueline Wells. Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented, is there any further discussion? Councilman Garner.
Um, this has been brought to my attention that we might need to amend the agenda, um, so I'd like to amend the agenda to remove item H under new business. Um, I forgot to have the attorney review this ordinance per section one point oh one dot zero one zero.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I, I think I forgot to mention that item, I mean, H, sorry.
Okay.
On new business.
Vice Mayor Sanger, second?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the amendment to the motion is to modify the agenda, um, to remove item H, is there any discussion? Should we split this in two motions? Should, I believe, a motion and an amendment.
We have the amendment to change the motion.
Right, so the amendment's what we're voting on.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Can you please open online voting? It'll take a second, I realize.
So you are voting on the amendment?
The amendment, correct, to remove item H.
Yes, so online voting is open.
Is yours blocked?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not yet.
We're not getting anything?
Councilmember Lubin voted, the rest of you are not seeing it?
Make sure you're wired, you're connected to the guests, or mine disconnected.
I'm logged in, is that, is that what you mean?
No, in the bottom right, where it shows your internet connection, mine reset and was going back to the.
No, it's, well, it says I'm connected to City of Rollins official.
Yeah, it's not, though, if you look at your.
Do you like to do a verbal?
Look right here.
Yes.
See where this is, it'll be a wifi signal.
And that's the answer, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So do we disconnect or connect?
Councilmember Wykam?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, online voting has closed, the motion passes with five days.
Disconnect and then go here?
Okay, so the next, so log out is what you're saying?
On the, on the wifi?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
It's still showing now?
Yeah.
No wifi network found.
Yeah, even as guest, that's what mine's done.
You too.
There we go, there we go.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Have to open the webpage and then.
Continue?
Yep, continue.
Technology is granted.
And then you should go, just go back.
Here?
Mine says no, uh.
We'll find out.
Our wifi now, so it should be, you're good, it's on wifi now.
Okay, well, we'll try.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we vote, I voted yes, okay. So the next thing is on the main agenda to approve the, uh, agenda as amended, uh, is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Okay, online voting is open.
I don't think I'm hooked up, oh, there we go.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five days.
All right, thank you. The next, uh, item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor, uh, uh, Sanger, sorry.
I move to approve the postponed city council meeting minutes of February twenty first, twenty twenty three, and the regular city council meeting minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty three as presented.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to approve the postponed city council meeting minutes of February twenty first, twenty twenty three, and the regular city council meeting minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty three as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five days.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is, uh, uh, public comment, it's in pursuant to resolution number two C dash ninety six, that sets a, uh, a time limit of five minutes per person. Uh, these things that are discussed have to be something that is not on the agenda, and, uh, if you do wanna speak, raise your hand, you'll be recognized, then please come to the podium, state your name so that the clerk can get that into the record and, uh, go from there. The rules that'll apply for this entire meeting is there'll be no personal attacks or name-calling, and you, uh, can address the issues only. You can attack the issues all you want, not people. Uh, you must remain courteous and respectful, only items that are not on the agenda will be discussed, uh, the, public comment is for, uh, for items on, uh, and then public co- uh, excuse me, public, I can't read in my own writing, public comment for the items that are on the agenda will be taken once there's a motion, a second, and then the way we're gonna do it is then, when discussion is opened, it will be for the council, once the council is done discussing it, I will open it up, uh, to the floor for comments or discussion, and then when they're done, uh, we'll come back and see if the council wants any more discussion. Uh, these procedures are important, and I think it'll be an easier and smoother, uh, cap- uh, for the council to conduct and to do city business at the same time, uh, is why we're here. So with that being said, I will open up public comment, and if you have something you wanna just, uh, talk about, we, the other thing I will mention during public comment is that's when we listen to you, we don't, we won't answer questions, we won't, uh, engage with you, but, uh, we will listen to you, and then, uh, don't think we're up here sleeping, we're listening to you, we will address those items, but not there and then. So with that being said, is there somebody that would like to come up and speak? This must have scared everybody. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is, oh, do we have one? Okay.
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor and council people, that you probably have already heard this, but I think it's appropriate so to give a big, uh, vote of confidence or whatever that you wanna call it to the city employees that have been working so hard during this winter. I don't know how many of you know it, but we got at least seventy inches of snow that I measured, I haven't checked what the total is during March, but it is an incredible amount, and I was watching the guys pick up, clean up the snow in front of my, in my street, and just, I had watched them all the time, but, you know, it was just so appreciated, and so I just wanted to just get up and say thank you.
Um, ma'am?
Ma'am.
Your name?
Your name?
Oh, Barbara Parsons, I'm sorry.
Okay, can you just sign in?
Oh, okay, I should know what I'm doing by now.
Okay, not a problem, thank you.
And thank you, Barb, and I, I will tell you, our crews are something we're very proud of, they're probably the most tiredest people in this room, but they are, they're awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to get up at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next, uh, item on our agenda, which is a proclamation, it is, uh, national, uh, excuse me, let me get this, I should have had it ready, I apologize. It is, uh, City of Rollins National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies, uh, can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas an emergency occurs to prompt response to, uh, police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is, is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Rollins Police Fire Communication Center, and whereas public safety communicators are the first and most critical contact for our citizens that have an emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters, the, by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Rollins Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dis- dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, I therefore, I, Terry Wykam, Mayor of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the week of April ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty three, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Rollins, Wyoming, in the honor of the men and women who diligently and professionally, uh, keep our ci- city and citizens safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like you to say something on that, if you would, y'all, sorry. I wanted you to hear me, so I had to let them quick clap, I'm sorry.
I just wanna thank you for recognizing, um, where it all starts, we, um, Christine took off.
We can still see her.
I'm the communication supervisor, Christine is the senior communications officer, and between us, we have a lot of years there, and, um, there are five more of us who, who are at the academy right now, getting certified, and, um, it's just, it's great to be honored and recognized for what we do, because sometimes they forget we're there, 'cause we're just in the background, but we're the.
Wow, thank you.
I know. But yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for everything you do, you're a very important part of all of those systems. Thank you. All right. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, Next thing on our agenda is, uh, a presentate, uh, presentation of the Community Builder Award for March 2023.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, could I ask members of the volunteer committee to join me up here, as well as masquerading and crew?
And crew.
All right, well, this is exciting, uh, to be up here to give this, uh, presentation. I'm gonna start, Mike O'Brien here's gonna, uh, take it from there. So, a, a little background about the Community Builder Award, it's a, it's a monthly, uh, award that the city presents to local businesses, individuals, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, and outstanding service in the interests of the city, as well as other contributions significant to the Rollins Quality of Life. So the volunteer committee met recently and voted to present the March 2023 Community Builder Award to Kelly Brent Masquerading LLC and Alisa Fontish for their outstanding service and contributions to the community. Uh, and before I send it over to Mike, personally, I, I got to meet these guys on a few projects for the city, we had them do some, um, ADA upgrades and handicap repairs to Rob Roy Park, um, and they very generously donated, I believe it was about $1,200 in materials and labor, uh, to build a, a handicap-accessible ramp up to our, uh, picnic table area. And then, right after that, I think it wasn't long after that, we, uh, they came in to help us do some concrete repairs for the, the, uh, to get in preparation for the skate park to be delivered, uh, and they donated some time and materials towards that project as well. So that's just as far as Parks and Rec goes, and the City of Rollins goes, I had firsthand, uh, you know, knowledge of, of that, uh, those donations, and that, you know, your generous time for those projects, but Mike's got a little bit more, he, I think he wants to add to it, so.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, about five years ago, Kelly Brent and Alisa Fontish moved to Rollins. Since then, they started masquerading, they and their crew have done so much for the community, in that short amount of time, they have helped, um, DDA with a couple of projects. They donated the work they did for the ADA improvements for Rob Roy Park, they donated, um, time and money to the skate park, donated to the Teen Glow Party for Halloween, helped buy wreaths from the swim team for Christmas, sponsored as well as help during the Derby. Um, they have also sponsored a Little League team, which Kelly is very into Little League teams. They have als- they have, they have also helped with snow removal after the snowstorms that have tried to cripple our community. While doing all these things for the community, they also helped the elderly around town with tasks and projects they may have had. I had the opportunity and pleasure to sit down and speak with Kelly. I asked him what drives you to do these things for our community. Kelly did not hesitate when he said, "All the great people that live here." He also appreciates the city as a whole, the way of life. One of the things he is most proud of doing for the community is helping people when they need things fixed, and if they are not able to do the work, they will find others that can. We all should be happy and grateful to have people like Kelly and Alisa, Alisa, sorry, who do what they do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, one of the things that, um, comes with the award is, uh, they, they're able to donate $100 to a nonprofit, and they have chosen Will's Warriors.
Be nice, be nice.
Yeah, I just want to thank the community for this, uh, we, we enjoy this community a lot, and we're always out there trying to do what we can to help out, uh, you know, help out our neighbors, and another great thing about this community, it wasn't just, you know, it's just not a, it's the whole community out there. I see them all out there, everybody, you know, helping their neighbors, that's what makes this community a great community, right? Everybody just always helping, you always see it on Facebook or whatever, somebody said, "You know so-and-so went over there and helped that person," that's great, that's big hearts here in this town, right? I mean, we're a small community, and I just love the way everybody, you know, pours out and helps each other, and don't ask anything in return, and that's why I love this.
Thank you so much for what you've done, I know my neighbors appreciated all your hard work. All right, next thing on our agenda is a presentation by the Wyoming Rural Water Apprenticeship Program for Stevie Osborne. You can start whenever, whenever you would like, thank you.
Well, I'm Riotta Walker, I'm the apprenticeship coordinator for Wyoming Rural Waters Apprenticeship Program, and I also have Wyoming Rural Water Executive Director Mark Pepper, and I'll have him come up in a second. Is he coming up?
He's coming.
He's hiding out in the hall.
We need Push Power on that TV?
No, it's on.
Well, it is. It's off.
What's going on, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should've sent it sooner, I guess. Well, um, I guess I'll just talk then, while we get this up. Uh, this is a, a big night for us, this, Stevie is the first apprentice to graduate from this program, it's a pretty new program, just a little over two years old, um, and we were really honored to have the City of Rollins be our first participating employer, and Stevie be our first apprentice, and she has been beyond phenomenal, and we're so proud of her and what she has accomplished, and, um, I really think that what the City of Rollins has accomplished with Stevie and Bud as her mentor, and our relationship working with the city, um, is really something that I would like to see duplicated across the state and all of our other communities, you've really set the bar really high, so thank you for that, um, I'm, I'm really grateful to how seamless this process has been with all of you. So, the Wyoming Rural Water Apprenticeship Program was created, um, in partnership with National Rural Water, um, they decided that in, in light of this workforce shortage that we're facing nationwide with water and wastewater operators, that something had to be done, and apprenticeship seemed like a good answer, it's not an immediate answer, but it is a long-term solution that we, we do believe is going to make a, a much greater difference in the long run. So, as I mentioned, the whole point of this is to present Stevie with her certificate of apprenticeship, but I'll come back to that, because I was asked to talk a little bit more about the program, um, so, so I'll do that. So, how, can you still hear me if I do this?
I can move this up there.
Oh, if you want.
You can take the paper off.
I think, oh, great, okay. So, how did we get here, just a little bit of the timeline? Um, so, we got the standards completed with Department of Labor, um, because 2020 and COVID happened, it ended up being early summer of 2020, and so the participating employer agreement was signed with the City of Rollins in the fall of 2020, and Stevie was then registered into the program, and she started her related technical instruction in January of 2021, and over the last two years has been working diligently on that, um, and in January, she completed the program. So, a little bit about apprenticeship, this is a registered apprenticeship program through the US Department of Labor, so, um, she has, this certificate is not just from us, it's from the US Department of Labor, and her apprenticeship number will carry through, it's something kind of like a diploma from college that she can take with her anywhere and prove that she has completed this training.
She cannot leave.
Well, we, none of us want that, but...
Okay, I just want to get that straight.
Um, but as most of you probably know, apprenticeship is a higher education training model that combines on-the-job training with related technical instruction, um, and, and apprenticeship is growing across the nation, people really see this as a beneficial model, um, where you can work and, and learn at the same time. So, why apprenticeship, I've kind of already touched on some of this, but it really is an employer-driven investment, an investment in your employee, an investment in your department, and in your community. Um, part of the agreement that the Department of Labor requires is that you set a progressive wage scale, um, I, I will say, you guys were awesome, and I never had to get on you about giving her a raise whenever she was due one, um, in fact, you went above and beyond that, and so I'm very grateful for that, um, because you rewarded her for all of the hard work that she put into it, um, and she went above and beyond anyway, so she definitely deserved all of that. But you, you earn while you learn, you're working full-time, and then you're doing this training on the side, so it's really like you're going to school and working full-time. And then, this is more of a systematic, structured training, um, in, in this industry, in the past, it's primarily been people just kind of training themselves up so that they can pass their certification exams. This training is structured to be more holistic and well-rounded, so that these operators come out with the skills that they need to have a career in this industry, and be able to, um, grow into other levels of this profession. So, with that, I mean, just for an example, we have everything from math to heavy equipment, um, we go through like state funding, and how government works in the state, and how that plays into their jobs, utility management, um, safety training, lab processes and procedures, all of those things are built into this curriculum. The on-the-job training, it's over the two years, they have to complete these five categories, and it's kind of broken down, the 4,000 hours total are broken down into these five categories. So the mentor and the apprentice work through making sure that they fit, um, the right number, I mean, they're not equal, so tools, equipment, workplace safety has a certain number of hours within the 4,000, and so on. So here is the comparison, side by side. So the program requires 4,000 on-the-job training hours, which is full-time over two years. Um, Stevie exceeded that, as you can see, the required related technical instruction hours are 288, Stevie exceeded that, a little bit. We require a Level 1 operator license, um, she has her Level 3, and she's working on her Level 4, which is the highest you can get in the state of Wyoming. So, all in all, um, when I say that Stevie has, um, performed above and beyond expectations, there's the numbers to prove it right there. Um, and then there have been some cost benefits to the City of Rollins for this, um, when you have an active apprentice in the program, all of the Wyoming Rural Water training, um, is at half cost to the apprentice throughout that time. Um, then, we have applied for grants through the state to pay for a lot of the costs associated with apprenticeship trainings, hotel rooms, mileage, that sort of thing. Um, also, a few exam costs have been covered under the program, um, and then apprenticeship training hours also count towards their DEQ requirement hours as well. So, um, our slogan for this is that we're training you for a career, not a job, and we really try to stress that, we don't want to just train someone to do the job, we want them to have a successful career and have the skills that they need, um, to, like you say, climb the ladder, if they said, should so choose. Stevie has had some opportunities while, as an apprentice in this program, to go to Washington DC for Water Rally and represent the state, um, in talking to the congressional delegation, um, you see her there with Governor Gordon, she received the pen that he signed the National Apprenticeship Week proclamation for, um, and she was at that ceremony as well. So, again, very proud to have her standing up there with me, representing this program. And then, I have to... Sorry, I would be remiss if I did not talk a little bit about Stevie and Bud as a team, because, uh, again, like I mentioned at the beginning, the mentor-apprentice relationship that these two have, um, all jokes aside, and dressing up as her mentor for Halloween, um, has, has really been phenomenal, and, and they, they feed off each other whenever I need Bud to be involved in something or provide with, me with feedback, um, he's there to do it, and I, I can't say that I have that with all of our other mentors, and so, um, I'm, I'm grateful, and I think that Stevie is successful because of the support that she has received, not only from the city, but also from her mentor, um, so again, thank you for that. Okay, so now, to the whole point of us being here, let's present Stevie with her certificate. Are there any questions in the meantime?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm as proud of her as you are.
As you should be.
Yes, for sure.
Please watch your step. Oh, yes, good call.
Come on up.
I'm pretty excited about it.
You should be.
You know, go ahead, look at this first.
He was trying to hide for that.
Yeah, Bud is trying to hide.
And, and I'll be pretty quick, Mark Pepper, Executive Director of the Association, so that, uh, you can know a little bit just how big a deal this is. There are 61,000 public water systems in the United States that, that employ about 450,000 professional water wastewater operators. There are 600 apprentices in the National Rural Water Apprenticeship Program in all 50 states. There are four in the state of Wyoming right now. Stevie is our first graduate, and she now joins a group of only 110 nationwide to achieve the apprenticeship status, and so I, it's, uh, it's a great program, we're hoping, and, and the mentor, a little bit more about the mentor scenario, is that we know in a lot of small communities in Wyoming, and they're all small communities in Wyoming, that we cannot afford to have, uh, a lot of people get trained at the same time there are guys trying to retire, or getting to that retirement age, and that's where the workforce gap is. And so the apprenticeship program was designed for the guy who's there, uh, to help train the person coming in, and as, as it says, there's 288 hours of, of classroom instruction. A normal operator only has to get 24 continuing education hours every three years, so we intensified a lot, so that when they graduate and they become, uh, she's kind of gone above and beyond to, to go to Level 3 already and Level 4, uh, and there aren't, there's only about 50 Level 4 water operators in the state of Wyoming, so, uh, she'll join a very select group there, too. Um, the one photo that we showed up there with her, with a, a lady in a, a white coat, uh, was at the Rural Water Rally, and I appreciate you guys letting her come, was, because she represented you guys, uh, as the best tasting drinking water in Wyoming that year. Uh, we met with Senator Barrasso, Senator Lummis, Representative Chaney, and, and we couldn't get her to shut up, if, if you can believe that. But, but the lady in that white coat was the, the senior staffer on the Labor Committee that actually wrote the apprenticeship, uh, program requirements through Department of Labor, and so, and she was the, uh, Stevie was the first apprentice that she got to share, uh, a little moment with when it was all said and done, so, uh, she's represented Rollins well, she represents the state well, and, uh, we're just glad to have her on board, so.
Who should stand again?
Thank you for letting us have a time.
You bet. Thank you. Well, Stevie, that's awesome. That's well-deserved.
Thank you.
All righty.
Uh, thanks, Mommy.
The next thing on our agenda is the Fire Civil Service Commission appointment, and, uh, we have one, uh, one position open, and we have one, let me think here, let me read here, one applicant, it's a reapplicant, and so, I'm going to ask, uh, Terry Patterson to come up here and, uh, tell us why you would, uh, like to be on this, uh, Fire Civil Service Commission.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the reason I wanted to re, get reappointed, uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Rawlins. Uh, Rawlins is nowhere, only place I'd ever want to live, and it's the way it has been. I have come from a family of nine kids, and I'm the only one that's lived here my whole entire life, so I'm going to stay here, and I'm not going anywhere. Uh, I also served on the Rawlins Fire Department for 15 years, uh, went honorary in 2018 for personal reasons, or I probably wouldn't have done it then, but, uh, and I believe in the last, what is it, four years, five years that I've been on the, the commission, uh, we've come a long way on rewriting the bylaws, and, uh, I think this commission works well together to get our task done.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of it? Terry? Okay, well, thank you for applying, uh, Councilman Weisenberg.
I was just going to make a motion and move to reappoint Terry Patterson to the Fire Civil Service Commission for a term ending November 30th, 2025.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to reappoint Terry Patterson to the Fire Civil Service Commission for a term ending, uh, November 30th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with five yeas.
Thank you, and thank you, Terry, for applying for that again. All right, next thing on our agenda is the Urban Systems Advisory, uh, Committee Appointment. I would entertain a motion at this time. Oh, wait a minute, let me go back, sorry. We have two, uh, two positions available, and we have two, uh, applicants. Uh, the first one, uh, enlisted in no particular order here, is Timothy Pacheco. Timothy, are you here? Would you like to come up and tell us, um, why you would like to be on this committee?
I would like to be on this committee. I'm not from Wyoming, I grew up in New Mexico, but I've been in Wa- Wyoming for about a little over 10 years now, and I've come to love this town, I've come to love this state, and I want to, I want to make a difference. I want to be able to help people that need it, like, like these great people do in this, uh, city. When things get bad, everyone will step in to help each other, they'll sacrifice whatever resources they have to help, help each other, and I want to be part of that. I want to make my mark in this great town.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the other applicant is, uh, uh, Franca Spurling-Jacox, did I pronounce that right?
No, that's fine.
Well, uh, please tell me the, tell me the correct one.
Franca.
Franca, okay, I'm sorry.
But 50/50, get it right.
Okay.
You know, that's what happens when you have a weird name. Can you imagine what it was like in 1950? Anyway, I, I'm not a, I'm a transplant. I've only lived in Wyoming for almost a year and a half. Um, I'm from Washington, don't hold that against me. Um, but I love this town, I really, it is, it's one of the most nicest, politest, except when they're in a car, they get a little strange. They, they're a little rude when they're in cars, but people are so, they bend over backwards to help you if you have any questions, if you have any suggestions, because I've never lived where it snowed in my entire life, except, you know, men's school things, and what we've had to overcome this winter is really, you know, beyond the call of duty. Our neighbors, like that guy was talking about neighbors, he, he plowed our driveway, and we woke up with three feet of snow in our driveway one day, thinking, how are we going to leave town now? You know? So, I mean, people are always willing to help you, and I, I've, when I worked, lived in Washington, I worked for eight, uh, the state, the city, and the county doing road, mostly worked on roads. I've been on a paving crew with the state of Washington, and so I know roads really well, anything you need to, so I really examine the roads around here really well. And if, so I have a few suggestions to the department, um, about their striping. But I just, I want to be part of the community, because Billy, when you live here, you need to know what's going on, and if, by coming to the city council meetings, we, I read, the senior senator gets these booklets sent to him once a month, that how you, what every department does, I read every single one of them, and I learn to see, okay, this is what they're doing, this is what they're doing, because you, if you don't know, how are you supposed to question things? How are you supposed to put your input in? How are you supposed to help others? And this is a great, I plan to die here, okay? I'm never moving. I, you know, it's just, it's, I've never lived in such a small town in my life, but I really enjoy living here. I mean, I'm, I'm 74 years old, you know, it's like, what, what you can do, I mean, the Senior Center's one of the most marvelous places that they have here to help others, and, you know, I want to get to know people like you, all you guys, and who you are, and, and just be part of what goes on. Urban development has always been really important to me. And when I lived in Vancouver, I watched all the new development come in, you know, and to see what, you know, they were doing, and I used to have to measure roads when they built new roads, so I understand a lot about roads, and, you know, the zoning, because I worked, sat right next to the zoning department, so I know a lot of history about what goes on in the town, how they have to, you know, do this and do that and make it right. So, I just want to be part of it, I just thought it would be so cool, and urban development, I thought, wow, it's right up my alley, you know? So, I, I hope I can contribute to, to, you know, put some effort, input into it, and if they have, because like I said, I've worked for all the government agencies in my own state, and I lived in Vancouver for 46 years, so I really got to know that community well, you know? And, uh, and Rawlins, I think Wyoming's a great state. It is just, you know, it may be little, and, but it's getting, you know, advanced, and it's, it's just has, except Interstate 80, that's the only back problem we run into, but it's a wonderful place to live, you know? I mean, we just, we have great people, we have great community, there's, there's so many good things about this place, that I just love it, you know? I just think it's one of the greatest places I've ever lived, and, uh, except having to go long-distance for doctors sometimes, you know? Gets a little driving, but, but I just want to be part of it, I want to learn more about our communities, as much as I can possibly find out, and by being on a board, I was trying to find a board that I could be on, that I might be able to help, you know? You never know, I mean, I may be a big-city woman, but I'm willing to be a small-time one, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate you applying for this.
You're welcome.
That is awesome. All right, so, I would entertain a motion, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to appoint Timothy Pacheco to the Urban Systems Advisory Committee for a term ending January 31st, 2027.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Timothy Pacheco to, uh, the Urban Systems Advisory Committee for a term ending July 31st, 2027. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with five yeas.
All right, thank you. I would entertain another motion. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to appoint Franca, is that right? Spurling-Jacox, to the Urban Systems Advisory Committee for a term ending January 31st, 2027.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Franca, gosh, Franca? Oh, my goodness. Uh, Spurling-Jacox, uh, to the Urban Systems Advisory Committee for a term ending January 31st, 2027. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with five yeas.
All right, thank you, and thank you both of you for applying for those, that board. Appreciate that. All right, we will move to the next thing on our agenda, which is Board of Adjustments, that's, uh, Councilman Seeloff, he is not here this evening. Uh, we'll go to Council of Governments, which, that's a board I sat on, we met on Wednesday at Saratoga. There were, uh, three reporters at that, or three reports we received at that meeting. One of them was Glenn Bartlett, County Clerk, about, uh, some of the new laws and procedures for voting, and, and how some of those will affect us. Uh, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because I'm sure Gwen will cover all of that when the time comes. Uh, the second presentation was by Lenny Layman, uh, he was, uh, our Emergency Manager for Carbon County. He was talking mostly about the, uh, communities that are in danger of flooding, and some of the meetings that they're having preemptively to, uh, get ready for, uh, high-water events in encampment, Saratoga, Medicine Bow, uh, Bags, Elk Mountain, Savory, Dixon, that sort of thing. Riverside encampment, I don't know, anyway, all of those, and, uh, and, uh, he's pretty busy getting ready for that, uh, trying to figure out sandbagging and getting things ready for a preemptive strike, because it's, it's really pretty imminent that they're going to have flooding issues. And the third presentation we had was about, uh, St. Christopher's Highway. Um, it, uh, it's an organization that, um, helps stranded travelers and such like that. They, they help them, uh, get a tire fixed, get a, get a room for the evening, get, uh, a fuel to get on to the next place, that sort of thing, and it's a wonderful, uh, program that if you haven't participated, you should, uh, think about it. Uh, and those are the reports that we got. Yvonne Johnson was not able to make it. Uh, we did talk about all the things going on around the county, and, and, uh, everybody is pretty much in the same mode we are, we're just praying for some green grass, but, uh, that wa, that was about it. The one other meeting that myself and, uh, Councilman Weisenberg and, uh, uh, Manager Tom Sarvey went to was the, um, Region 6, uh, WHAM meeting, and they basically gave us a legislative update, and, uh, we got to talk about, uh, oh, quite a few things. Mostly, uh, it was about, uh, the legis, you know, what went on in the legislature, and how it affected towns, and, and how, um, you know, how WHAM is working for us. I'll, and I'll stop there. And then, um, my mouse moved, and that's not a good thing. Um, oh, man. I forgot that mouse didn't work. I apologize here. Okay, and the next, uh, next report will come from, uh, about DDA Main Street Program, which is, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger, uh, sets on that board.
Mine will be way shorter, nothing new to report.
That was quite a bit shorter. All right, next, the next one is, uh, Rawlins Planning Commission, uh, Councilman Weisenberg sets on that board.
There was a meeting I had missed it due to work schedule. Um, I do know that, um, in that meeting, they re-elected officers for the new year, so I'll have to get an update of who the Chair, Vice Chair, and everything is on there, and then I'll report that back as soon as I get that. And then, there's another meeting scheduled for, I believe, early April.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is the Urban Systems Committee, uh, Councilman Garner.
Um, I just don't have an update, we're still waiting for our first meeting to be scheduled.
Okay, thank you. All right, next thing on our agenda is, uh, um, we're going to ha, have an update from Board of Adjustments, uh, to the council, and I will turn that over to Chairman Stanley Bug. And to explain to everybody, we have these various boards, and we, we, uh, we have them come in once in a while, just to kind of tell us what they're doing, so we know what they're doing, so we can be better partners, and, and, uh, and also, uh, so we know what's going on, and so we can better be prepared to help them.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, it's nice to be here. If I could start off with, I'll give a little bit of a report, seems how Bruce wasn't here. For the first time in over two years, we have a full board. Uh, like I said, I can't even remember when the last time was, I've been on the board since 2012, and it's been a long time since we've had a full board. So, uh, thank you to all those that participate, helped us get this far, we've gone a long ways, and we've grown a lot. Uh, we have, we actually brought up two, uh, presentations of annual reports, there's not been one sent to City Council for several, along, quite a few years, so we, if you'd like, we'd read 21 and 22, or you just want 22?
Uh, I'd like to hear both.
Okay, well, I've got Shawna Roberts here, she's our Vice Chair, and I'll let her read 20, 21.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. In 2021, we, um, we had one, two, three, four, five adjustments, or five meetings that we went through. Um, it looks like, um, I'm sorry, there were six that we went through, um, they, we, do you want to know specifics?
No, not necessarily, no.
Okay, I can read specifics if you want. Um, looks like we voted to approve and deny, um, several just different things, um, just general adjustments to people building on their specific properties. Um, 2021 was pretty slow, looks like, according to past stuff. Um, doesn't look like there were any changes to any rules or anything in 21. Trying to head all the good stuff.
Thank you.
All the headaches?
Yes.
So, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine different applications, they were not all approved. As we've grown with the Board of Adjustments, we've learned to do things the right way, in the legal way. So, through my years of experience, and now, as Chairman, I s, I so hardly try to make sure that we're doing it the right way and the legal way. So, with that said, there's several people in town that were not happy, and I try to work with them, but it's got to go by the law, it's got to go by the rules, so that's what we did. We did, uh, do approve other ones, the most recent I can remember as proven was, uh, the sign for Maverick, which is going to be coming in, I'm excited about that process, yes, and then, uh, what was the other one? It seemed, oh, uh, Starbucks, we had something to do with that, too. So, we're here to help the people, but we got to do it the legal way. So, uh, as Chairman of this board, it's my job to see that this happens, so, uh, this last year's been a struggle for the board, because we've had some people that are very upset and wanted to cause trouble, but... but I'm so glad to hear the mayor say something. These meetings are to hear complaints and issues and complain about something. We're here to do something, approve a variance, and that was it. So, once we got through that, things got better. But with that being said, that's all I had to report, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you guys for all your hard work and dedication. Appreciate it. Alrighty, the next thing on our agenda is City Manager and Staff's Report. I will turn the floor over to you, Tom Sarvey.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Couple things to report tonight. One was from the last council meeting. I was asked to look at the cost of the decals of the city bus, as to what those were, and the total cost for the decals is $1,090. That's what we spent, and I sent the council what those looked like on the bus, so I wanted to report that. Second of all, we have received bids on four contractors on the Water Master Plan that we have, and those are still in the envelope. We will open those within the next couple of days and summarize the bids, and then report back. We met Monday with representatives from WWC Engineering on the project management and the publicity for our waterline project. And we, we saw that there is a really good start to what they call a Gantt chart, which will outline out for us from start to finish the waterline project. And we are going to put to that the grants that we've received, the three and a half million. And then we should be able to put to that what we plan on the rest of the funding for that project through USDA, the Drinking Water Law. We will schedule with the council a work session, either in late April or early May, where representatives from WWC Engineering will come and present that timeline and those things to the council. We are scheduled for April 19th as part of the budget to have the nonprofit organizations come in. Their applications are due to the city by the 10th of April, and we will have a special meeting where each of them will, will be able to report to the council with their, their needs, their financial things, and so the council will be able to hear those. And that is scheduled for April 19th. On the budget preparation, we, we have got to the, the point where I will start to prepare a draft of the budget for the council. And once I have that draft prepared, we will either try to schedule a special meeting or a work session at the council's pleasure, and then I will be able to share with you the, the status of the budget, where we are currently, currently at. I'd like to do that sooner than later with the council, so that we can see which projects we'd like to do and those things that the council would like to incorporate into the budget. And that's all that I have to report.
Well, when you get, when you're ready to do that, just let us know, and we'll schedule a special meeting, so we'll have time to do it right.
Perfect.
We'll go over that, okay?
That'd be good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anything from, yes sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Seon, the Recreation Director, would, would like to give a short report about the restaurant at the golf course, and what we are looking at for this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to jeez.
Oh, that's okay, Honorable Mayor and Council. Wish I was here with some better news, but I wanted to give you an update on the restaurant situation out at the golf course for this upcoming season. We do open on Saturday, April 15th for golf. Despite advertising and sending out RFPs, working with Yvonne Johnson, who's been great with Carbon County Economic Development Corporation, we had newspaper ads all over Wyoming and surrounding states. We sent, we emailed RFPs to more than a dozen culinary arts schools to try to get some interest in that way. We've reached out to local restaurants, local food trucks, to try to see if we can encourage someone to open a restaurant out at the golf course with no luck. So, less than a month ago, we've, kind of like we were, similar situation last year when we were, we were a little bit late getting a golf course restaurant going, we had a backup plan in place, and we met with Mikhail, the Health Inspector, last year. So I've had discussions with her again this year. So here's our plan, to, to give you an update. We are preparing to operate the restaurant in-house by utilizing city seasonal employees. Our main goal is to provide a service that will benefit not only the golf community, but the residents in Rollins as well. We would like to hire a cook and a bartender slash server. We believe that the restaurant could be operated with those two employees, with some backup from our other seasonals who run the, the pro shop. So, to backing up a little bit, I mean, we've had a little bit of a roller coaster ride for restaurants at the golf course since it opened in 2004. I know for, prior to 2019, we had Bunkers Restaurant for about five years, and it was very successful, and it did very well, and we didn't have to worry about it so much. Well, when they left, we didn't have a restaurant concessionaire come in. So our golf pro, Kevin Gannon, took over the restaurant in 2019, as well as 2020. Now, he did a fantastic job, and I've, that was right prior to my coming onboard with the city. But he's our golf pro, he's not our, our, you know, restaurant manager at the golf course. But he gave us some, some insight and ideas to how to operate a restaurant in-house. So while he will supervise the staff, Kevin would be extremely limited with his hours as far as working at the restaurant itself. He would supervise the staff, he would be a support for menu items, and we would probably have him order food and, food and beverages, as well as alcohol, through the city's liquor license. So, our estimated operation of the restaurant would be May 1st through September 15th. This could change, with the hours as follows. Mondays and Tuesdays, we would be closed. However, I want to point out that we have made arrangements with the Health Inspector, and we can offer prepackaged food and snack items, as well as beverages through the, the pro shop on the days that the restaurant is closed. Wednesday through Saturday, we would be open 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Sundays, Kevin's thought was we would open 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We would try to do a Sunday morning breakfast to see how that works. And again, if, if we see successes in some areas, we might try to branch out a little bit, pending our staffing and what we have onboard at that point. I wanted to share some financial information, and this goes straight from our financial statements from 2019 and 2020, when Kevin actually ran the golf course in-house. So we have actual numbers. We spent, an average of those two years, for food and non-alcoholic beverages expenses, we spent $15,000 for the purchase of those items. For alcohol, we spent $10,000. So that comes up to $25,000 of expense for those items. Revenues from food and non-alcohol was $22,000. Revenues from the alcohol, the bar area, was $15,000. So that totals $37,000. So, just those numbers, we were in the black by $12,000. But that does not take into consideration staffing. So what we are looking at doing is hiring two seasonal employees. There are a few who have expressed interest already. And we, we feel that the cost of those two employees for the entire season might come to about $21,000. So that's, you know, more than what we expect to bring in revenue-wise. However, I, I, I think that maybe our, our profit and loss might look better at the end of the season if we pay close attention and really run it like a business like we should. I think we might be a little bit better off. But one part of this equation I want to bring up is, you know, let's talk about what effect this would have on our golfing community and those who support the golf course if we don't have a restaurant with food and beverages available. So I also, what I did was, I went back and pulled the same numbers for those, actually, this is from fiscal year 2122, to give us a good idea. Between greens fees, cart rentals, and memberships, we brought in $164,000. So the way I look at it is, even if we lost 10% of, say, greens fees and cart rentals from those who maybe don't want to go back a second time if they go to the golf course and there's no restaurant, even a 10% reduction in those revenues would, would be more than enough to cover those costs by purchasing the food and non-alcoholic beverages, purchasing the alcohol and paying the, the staff, because that would come up to about $16,000. So this is not an ideal situation, but I feel like we have an obligation to do what's best, one, for the golf course, and two, for this community, to have another option for dining. And I think we could accomplish that in-house, under the guidance of Kevin Gannon, our golf pro extraordinaire. And, you know, it, if somebody wanted to come out and, and take over as a restaurant concessionaire and sign an agreement with City Council, we would welcome that. And we would probably have a modification to the agreement with approval of Wendy, to say that's, that's fine, but maybe they would purchase any food and beverage that we purchased for that season, that part of that, them taking over, would be to buy that food from us. So, that said, I do want to point out, we did look at, I think a few council members had asked about food trucks and about, like, DoorDash, and we really did kind of crunch numbers and look into it, and we didn't see, well, the food trucks we talked to weren't interested, first of all. And, and a lot of it came down to, you know, restaurant, what do you think? Location, location, location. Well, it's not outside of Rollins. So like, for a restaurant's concessionaire to come in and run a restaurant, that's one thing. But it is out of sight, so I do understand that. Because it's a, you know, it's no further to go to the restaurant from City Hall than it is to Washington Park from City Hall. So I, I don't really look at it as a restaurant being out of town. But as far as location and having them set up, most of the food trucks we talked to said they just, you know, people drive by tractor to supply to see if there's a food truck there. I know my wife asks me to do that every once in a while. Hey, let's go buy tractor supply and see who's there, you know? And so, the other was with the DoorDash, and we looked at timeliness, and when somebody's out on the course, do they know when they're going to be finishing the ninth hole, and when to order that food, when to pay for the food? And we just, you know, it, it could possibly be a backup plan, and we thought about, in addition to having a restaurant, we could give that option in the, in the food, in the golf carts, that they could order DoorDash if they wanted something other than our menu. Because our menu will probably be fairly basic. We're still working on that, we kind of wanted to get council's thoughts and, and, and see what you thought about it. And otherwise, I think, we feel like that's in the best interest of the city at this point, is to move forward and operate a restaurant in-house. But I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Did you get any feedback at all as to why people were interested, or?
For the food trucks, or?
To be a restaurant?
The one, we did have a couple of meetings with a, a family out of Craig, Colorado, who operated a Mexican restaurant through their family. They have a few other restaurants in neighboring states. And, and I'll tell you, and this is, this is a great deal for somebody to open a restaurant. And, and be, and so, back to the story. So when we met with them, and her husband walked into our kitchen, which was clean and giant, and all the serveware's there, all the cookware's there, walk-in freezer, walk-in refrigerator, his eyes were like this, he loved it. But what they reported back to us, one, they weren't big on the bar aspect, even though that's probably about 50% of the concessionaire's revenue. But two, they really wanted a location with a drive-through, and we couldn't quite figure out how to get there with that, out, out at that location. So, so I, those are the only ones that we talked to, but I, I tell you, when you look at what we charge in rent, because it really is a benefit to this community, not just the golf course, and the city pays the utilities, and we have all the serveware and the cookware, and it's a great facility, it's a beautiful kitchen. You know, we just need to get somebody to walk in that restaurant, and, and they'd be ready to sign, in my opinion. We just didn't get anybody to reach out, so. And then for the food trucks, it was mostly location. They wanted to be somewhere more visible in Rollins.
I, I can tell you, I'm not real crazy about having a restaurant run by our employees. I just don't like that, but I actually talked about the food trucks a little bit, but if they don't want to do it, they don't want to do it. The DoorDash thing, the only reason I brought that kind of, that up, and it wouldn't, it would be a variety of that, I guess, is that if, if every restaurant that wanted to participate had their menus hanging out there, and people would order food from them, like, one might want a steak, one might want a taco, whatever, then it would make some of these restaurants maybe a little more friendly towards the golf course, and, and help promote it, because, you know, that sort of thing. I'm no expert in any of that, I own one restaurant, and I'll never own another one, because one's enough. But I honestly just don't really like our employees running a restaurant. But having said that, I don't know what the options are, but...
I agree, and actually, that was one of the reasons we were really looked into it. As far as the DoorDash is, it's another way of, also, like you said, it supports our local businesses and restaurants. So it would have been nice if we could figure out a way to, to make that work, but we'd still have to have the staff to clean up. There were just a lot of, we did like a pros and cons, and there were just more cons and more questions. You know, we'd still have to have staff to clean up after people eating in the restaurant. We've done it before, we did it for two years, and, and it did well. And we would, we'd have the same individual that could oversee it, but he's going to be out teaching kids how to golf this year, instead of being in the kitchen.
You know, it's odd that, because my memory tells me in the past, it was reported when, when it was being run that way, that it lost quite a bit of money, but... And I don't know what made me say that, other than that's what I thought it was told.
We asked, and we didn't have the numbers with the staffing. We kind of looked into the, the staffing numbers from those years, and we did lose a little bit. The, our golf pro thought, and I think we probably about broke even, I think is what he said, but, you know, but that's not without really crunching the numbers. I think when we looked, though, we did, I think that's where the $12,000, I think that's where the $12,000 in the red, average of those two years that we ran it. That's where that number came from, so. But we will do our best to not, to, you know, so that, that, that's not the case. And then, that's why I mentioned, though, you know, I could just imagine somebody traveling Interstate 80, which we'd love to have them hop off and play golf, and get a hotel, and spend some money in town, but they come to our golf course, and there's no restaurant, and there's no beverages. I don't know that they'd want to jump off 80, they'd go to the next town the next time they're coming through to golf, I really, you know...
The restaurant I owned was on an amusement park, and if they couldn't find something to eat or drink, they quit riding the go-karts and bumper boats and stuff, and I lost money every year on my restaurant. And, that's why I'll never own another one. But, I ju, I just don't like that. I'm not saying I'm against it, or would vote no on anything like that, but it for sure is not my, what I would consider the ideal setup, just so you know. It's just me.
I share the same sentiment, I really do. I just, again, it goes back to, and we met, we met with, you know, Human Resources and City Manager and Finance Director, and we met with our staff at the golf course in different meetings to try to figure out. And it really comes down to what's best, not only for the golfing committee, but really, number one, also the, the, the residents here. Because restaurants are successful if they're in there, and, and we'll have a limited menu. But I think people enjoy it, I think we, Kevin has some great ideas, and I, I feel like it'll work. It's not the ideal situation, but, but, but we'll see.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I, I think if we're down to the point where we're at, if that's the, the only case we have, we have to do something. I have to say, I agree with Jason, that if there's nothing there, it's going to... if there's nothing there, it's going to harm more than good, especially if someone is coming through and going to return to the course. And there's not that to be had. I don't thi- think they would stop. It might deter someone else, uh, from actually playing there also if that's not the case, you know? Uh, the DoorDash thing, he, he, uh, said that you don't know whether you'd get something on the turn or not, whenever you order, you don't know when you're going to turn the ninth hole to head to tenth, you know, um. And how are you going to get the food that comes into there to someone, say on the tenth, eleventh, twelfth hole, you know? Um, so it could be a concern there too. I think we could, uh, still offer that kind of service for someone that might want to, uh, do that. But I mean, if we have to run a restaurant ourselves, I, I mean, I don't think there's any other options unless someone does come forward now.
If I could add something else, I mean, we're not giving up on trying to find that restaurant concessionaire to come in and run a legit restaurant. And our goal is to have somebody come in and run a restaurant year-round. Because I think with the right hours and the consistency and the, and decent food, it would, it would be a success. Um, we did get a grant for an indoor golf simulator that will go into the indoor, uh, restaurant area. That will support a restaurant coming into, into town and that would support it in the winter months as well. So we're not giving up. We're going to keep reaching out. We're going to keep trying to find someone, um, the best we can.
Is that indoor, uh, golf, uh, simulator, how big is it? Is it going to take up a lot of that dining room area?
It'll take up a good chunk of that dining room, um, probably forty percent. And we've met and talked about it and looked at it. There's other ways to, to move the tables and chairs around and, and do, um, the elevated tables to, uh, and then also possibly take out that center wall. That's no longer a law as what it was when it was built, but, um, but I think that the benefit of having a simulator, and we've met with the golf advisory board and talked about this several times, the benefit of having a, um, a simulator open is it, you know, I think we'd lose four tables, you know, four good sized tables, but we don't always fill up. Usually, usually it's for like family reunions or high school reunions or weddings. But the beauty of this, the golf simulator we're looking at purchasing is it's, it's, uh, mobile, so you can break it down. It's not something you want to break down every weekend, but if you had a big event on a Saturday, you could absolutely break that down and go grab the tables that we would probably store in the cart barn and bring them out and set up for larger events. So, uh, anyways.
Any further questions, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to say that over the years since the golf course has opened and when we had really great concessionaires in there operating it. I'm not a golfer, but my husband and I and our family very, various times, we really enjoyed it. So I, I don't, I, I just can't give up on the idea that there, it ought to work. It just, it just ought to work.
And it's an absolutely beautiful setting in the evenings out there.
Sitting out there in the summertime, now I know it doesn't seem impossible, but sitting out there in the open and seeing the mountain and, and the countryside, it is just spectacular. So it should work.
And I just broke a rule. I, I should have made you come up. I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm, I'm practicing here. So her name's Barb Parsons. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Tom?
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything for us, Wendy?
I do not, sir.
Alrighty. Uh, next thing on our agenda is a direction from city council, the, uh, city manager or city attorney. Is there anything? Uh, Councilman Garner?
Oh, Wendy, if you get a chance, um, I know I missed my window this week. Can you review that ordinance I presented in, for the next council meeting?
Could, um, I absolutely can. Do you have it in Word format by any chance?
I think I can get it there.
Okay. That would just make it easier, so I can make changes and show them to you?
Okay, sounds good.
I would like to, uh, say about that is, uh, when we're asking for legal advice, basically, I think what we're asking for is, you know, is this legal, is this legal, is this legal, that sort of thing. I really don't expect a lot of leading, if you will, because that's our document. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, um, I'd like Wendy to work on, uh, resolution, please, for, uh, reintroduction, induction and, or, or for, so it can come forward in the next couple of meetings or what, for the, uh, House Bill resol- uh, one thirty-five, um, that did not go through, um, this year for the abatement and abandoned buildings. I'd really like to just kind of take that document, attach it, make our resolution, go forward with that, uh, that document, uh, carried some weight. It went through resolution committee and everything else. Um, it was very good. It just honestly didn't get pulled out of a drawer on a, on the floor, so, uh, it would be very helpful, um, to get that. And I can send that to you or I'm sure you can find it. Um, but I'd like to be able to do that, so we can set that forth to be presented for us when we, uh, vote on resolutions to take to whim.
I can do that.
Is there anything else, Councilman? Council, Council, Councilor, sorry.
I'll get it right.
So, um, the ethics policy that Councilmember Gardner was going to present, but took back. Um, it has stated a lot of Wyoming law in there with just the numbers. Um, it would be extremely helpful, not only to me, but to the public, to have a cheat sheet, so to speak, that has the number and then what it is. Um, so we can, um, look back and see exactly what they're talking about in that.
Um, would you want the entire ordinance or statute or just a reference as to what it kind of says?
Uh, the ones that I looked up were only a couple of sentences, so that it, they shouldn't be pages. It is specific to a certain thing. But that would be helpful, so we could, um, don't have to go back and back and forth.
Take a stab at that.
Thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Along that line, um, that would just end up having to be a reference point as of current, because state statutes change and are amended and, and the way that they're worded is actually as ammen- you know, amended and, and so whatever document she would have to provide at that point in time could be changed later on.
Right. I, I understand that, but I'd like to know what it says now, because looking up some of them, uh, some were taken out, so to speak, and I, I, it, it'd just be helpful in looking at that ordinance if we had a cheat sheet, so to speak.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Garner?
I was just looking for clarification from what you asked Wendy, uh, mayor.
Well, it is not her job to write our preferences down. I see her job as to, um, give us advice as to whether it's legal or not. And if it's not, for what reason? So then we can make the changes we need to make.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just got one more.
Weisenberg?
Question, um, what, Wendy, if you could, what is, uh, the timeframe and agenda has to be presented to the media?
Um, it's actually at least the week before. Uh, we normally try to do it a full, um, five days at least. Um, but as long as it's within forty-eight hours of the actual meeting, we can push it that far. But with, uh, our newspaper only reporting twice a week, that really puts us in a bind as to how long, but we would have to advertise.
Legal is forty-eight hours. And what's the purpose of that?
It's to make sure that the, um, community knows what's going to be happening, so that they can put any, um, input to the representatives.
All right, thank you.
Is there anything else? All right. We're going to move on to the, uh, next item, which is under new business, uh, item A, and it is, uh, let's see. Talks about a mountain bike, uh, recreation area. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Garner?
I'm going to approve the city staff to continue working with Bureau of Land Management and local partners on the feasibility of developing mountain bike trails and recreation site on Bureau of Land Management property in Rollins, Wyoming.
Second? Okay, there's been a motion made in second to approve, uh, city staff to continue working with, uh, Bureau of Land Management and other local partners on the feasibility of developing mountain bike trails and recreation site on Bureau of Land Management property in Rollins, Wyoming. Is there, uh, any discussion? And I believe there will be, so I will just turn the floor over to you, Jason.
Do you need to turn on the TV yet? Looks like it.
Why'd it go off?
Because they turned it off for three months.
Oh. Exercise.
Exercise, there you go.
Very concerned it's on.
All right, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you. Um, let me see if I can reduce this image a little bit. All right. And then Lynn, the other ones? All right. So hopefully this image will come up on the screen and we'll start with this image and kind of go through a presentation. Um, so let's do this now while this is up there. So this is the property that we're going to be talking about, uh, for a potential, uh, mountain bike recreation area. Um, it's on the west end of town and on the, I don't know how to, what shape that is, but on the left, lower, low, the bottom part of the left would be where the old Newman, uh, baseball fields are, to give you an example.
Is that the circular thing right there? In the corner?
Use the mouse.
Yeah, on the bottom, very bottom left of that property is the, uh, is the old Newman ball fields. And then Lynn's going to help pull up a picture so we can, so. Okay, and then go back to here. Yeah. And that way I can go to them all. Perfect. All right, thank you, Lynn. All right, my apologies. So can you see now that same in- interesting shape on the, kind of the left center of the screen that shows you where this property is in relation to the city? Everybody see that? Good idea. It's this, this property here, and we'll talk a little bit more about the map, but maybe I can start by kind of doing a, a, a little presentation on this. Um, first I'd like to say, uh, with us tonight is Tyrell Perry. He's our park superintendent. Um, I believe Andy Williams is an outdoor recreation planner from BLM is here this evening. Um, and I think we also have some members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, uh, here this evening, as well. So the idea of the, of, of building a, a mountain bike trail system and recreation area actually came from this guy behind me, Tyrell Perry. He brought this idea forward and, uh, asked, you know, hey, what are, what do you think about talking to BLM and, and see what their thoughts are on, on this idea? And I'm like, that sounds great. So Tyrell ran with it, met with, uh, BLM, uh, with their outdoor recreation planner on the feasibility and the steps. Um, the BLM representative was very interested and the item was also brought to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee in, uh, January and February of twenty-twenty-three. With BLM's interest, actually Andy Williams, outdoor recreation planner from BLM, attended our March second, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and gave us a presentation on, um, the idea. Um, the, the committee members were very excited after listening to the presentation and, and we all kind of agreed and the committee members agreed that, um, if there's any way the city could pursue the potential of working with BLM to develop this project, it would be in our best interest. Part of the discussion was about potential benefits this project would bring, um, like the economic development with travelers along Interstate eighty utilizing the park. I mean, picture driving Interstate eighty and how many RVs do you pass or pass you um, that have mountain bikes on the back, you know, on racks? I mean, I just keep thinking that when, when I think about this project. Um, we could host local, regional and, and multi-state events right here in Rollins. This would benefit youth and families in our community as well as visitors to Rollins. Um, so, uh, Tyrell Perry and I met with, um, Andy, uh, March ninth to discuss what, what would the first steps be, um, to see if this project is even feasible and what could we do? And, and Andy's thought was, well, first we need to bring it to city council and see if council, uh, thinks it's a good idea, which is why basically this is, this is the very first step. This is initial. This is not saying we're going to commit city time and resources to build this park. This is just to see if city council is interested in directing staff to continue working with BLM to see if it's, to, to look at its potential and see if it's feasible. Um, additional information from that meeting was that BLM would take lead on this project. And I kind of want to repeat that. BLM would take lead on this project. And the city could be a, a great partner in developing this project as well. As it is, it would be a huge benefit to our city, I believe. Um, BLM, uh, could begin the process to schedule public scoping meetings and work on the NEPA process. And, uh, a couple other notes, this project is in alignment with the Rollins BLM, BLM Field Office Resource Management Plan for Recreation and Visitor Services. Additional recreation sites will be considered for development based on need or demand, site suitability and legal public access. This is also fit for the BLM Recreation Department for helping in the creation of recreational opportunities for the public. Um, the city could potentially support in a way of identifying and developing local partnerships. We could, um, reach, we could research and talk at our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee about potential access points. Um, we could research potential grant funding, um, and also just continue discussions at our monthly Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Uh, the trail system here is ideal to benefit, uh, riders from beginner to advanced. Um, the recreation site would include parking, walking paths as well as an educa- or I'm sorry, as well as educational features. Vault toilets and garbage collection would be addressed later during planning phase and as budget, uh, budgets allow for this expense. Um, I do want to make, I want to point out that this property is not in fact in the city limits. So if you look at mouse here, this orange right here is the city limits. And give me another idea, this is Washington Park right here. Somewhere right around there. Everyone else is probably going, no, up a little bit to the right. Okay. This is the city limits right here. So the city limits does border a piece of this BLM property, but the BLM property is not within the city limits. Um, I don't, personally, it's not my decision, but I don't see how that would be a conflict or, or any reason that we wouldn't want to try to work with BLM to create something here and do whatever we can, because simply the, the economical, uh, benefit that this would have for our city as a whole. Uh, but I did want to point that out to council and I'd be happy to answer other questions as well. So staff analysis I put in your report, um, the city's role in support of this project really has not been identified, uh, at this time. Um, this is the initial stage of discussion to identify the need and opportunity for this project to move forward. Um, city financial and staffing impacts is estimated to be minimal, even if the project does move forward. Um, and we would be, uh, willing, obviously, to continue updating council on any findings or any, um, new development on this, uh, potential project. And so really, um, the recommended action from us is for city council to direct staff to continue working with BLM and other local partners on the feasibility of developing mountain bike trails and recreation area site on the BLM property in Rollins. And so, maybe now I'll go back to the map again real quick. One thing I wanted to point out is just a couple things. It's actually, the location is kind of ideal. I mean, there's an exit on the highway right there, right here. Is this, let's see, is that's one of the RV parks right here, correct? So both RV parks are right there. I can't imagine they wouldn't be involved in being some sort of partner in this project. But as far as, just go back to the... So yeah, this is in proximity to the, the city. This is where it's located. And I think that's the end of the presentation and what you have in your council report. And then I think myself and Tyrell and possibly Andy and maybe any members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee would be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Councilman Weisberg?
I have a concern that this is in the county. I don't, and this is just, I, I pointed that out right away before you had even mentioned that, that I said that's in the county. I don't know what the legal ramifications are. I, in my aspect, I would love for the talks to continue with BLM so they don't stop, but I think this is where the county needs, probably needs to step in and get involved and make a recommendation on that. Or the annexation of a property into, inside of a city limit, I think, for our jurisdiction. I'm speaking possibly out of term, but I'd like to have legal on this, please.
Sure. I would expect it would need a joint powers, a three-way joint powers between the county, the city, and BLM. At a minimum, it would be a three-way MOU, but I think a joint powers would be much more appropriate so that everybody is, is very, very clear on who is responsible for what.
Are, are we allowed to spend city money improving county property?
I will have to look that up. If it's something that we're in a joint powers, we can. So we need to be very careful with that as well. So I need to do more research on that.
I think it's a great project. I just, you know, the technicalities worry me a little bit, but...
And we would definitely need to, if we move forward with this, we would definitely need to have somebody from the county join in your, your meetings.
That was one of the discussions we had is, and I believe it's on the, well, I know because I wrote the agenda partially earlier today, but our next Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, one of our tasks is to identify who's, who should be sitting at this table. And the city, BLM, and the county were the first three. And then we talked about Continental Divide Trail and, and other, you know, mountain bike clubs and things like that. But, but that was for sure. And, and I think the thought was similar presentation to the county commissioners meeting and to get their buy-in as well. Let's see. I don't want to jump too far ahead, but I, I do want to point out. So Phase 1, if this goes forward, would certainly be that piece of property that what I talked to there. But what's unique about this is if you look at that property, if you could see the cursor right here, this is BLM here as well. And then this is BLM also right here. And then this is BLM right here. And this is Highway 287. And there's, you know, the Continental Divide Trail. There's an old mine back there that has a road going out to it. Granted, you know, this is way down, not, I don't know, way down the road, but this is down the road. But I just wanted to share what maybe a bigger picture could be is to get some access or easements on these two properties is all it would require to be able to go from here to here, to here, to here. And I probably wasn't even supposed to bring that up tonight, but I think it's a unique piece of that, that, this project and the potential of how big it could be. So I thought I would share it.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So as legal, from legal standpoint, would we be better off to not continue, I mean, allowing the continuation of the talks? Or should we involve the county immediately to, and present it that way before we say, continue on and then, and I'm not trying to say it's a waste of time and resources, but in that aspect, I mean, we might be shooting.
I think the two could be done at the same time.
So as, as the motion stands, it would be okay for them to continue working with the BLM on this project, but start involving the county?
Absolutely, yes.
Anybody else? Come up to the podium, please.
I think this sounds like a very good idea, but I, oh, the sandbag, sandbag, you know. I do have a question, though, concerning your comments. I've been here since 1979 and at that time, back then, the baseball fields were out there. So was that, at that time, wasn't the city responsible for the upkeep out there? And didn't they do the upkeep and pay for all the maintenance out there? If that's the case, I'm west, what's the difference now? I don't know, that's why I'm asking, this is my question.
I have a guess. And it's because of my time in town.
Sure.
But that was the Newman Fields. It was built by the Newman Trucking Company and Motte Not Ted and that bunch. And I believe at that time, the agreement was that they could use that property, but the city pretty much has abandoned it. So at that time, there was some sort of agreement where the city could use it for that purpose. And I don't know how it sunsetted, Stan, to be honest with you, but it was an agreement between the city and BLM. But I know that that, that didn't last. I was here in 78 and it, pretty much right away, they quit using it, but...
Right, yeah, I was in 79. I know my son played ball out there, but, and softball was out there too then. But I'm just kind of curious because I know the city ran it for the softball leagues and baseball leagues. So I just wondering, what is the difference now? And it was a very good answer.
Maybe not, maybe not a lot, but, you know, that was 40 years ago.
Yes, well, yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
On that aspect, I do know those fields were stopped being used when the sporting complex was built and utilized at that point in time. That's, I played junior Babe Ruth and, and stuff like that out there at that point in time. And it was, I don't know if it was more of a city function, coed softball that went on out there or not, if it was programmed through, but at that point in time, there was South Central Baseball Softball Association that had taken and did a lot of that kind of stuff and put that kind of stuff together. So I don't know where that falls. I just wanted to make sure of legal and where we should be at that.
If I could make an analogy, the airport is a joint powers board and the money comes from the state, the county, and the city as a joint powers board. So I believe, again, I'm going to do more research, but I believe just like the airport is a joint powers board, that this would be most appropriate as a joint powers board.
Okay, well, I get, we're getting into the weeds here a little bit, but I, I think the question is, is do we as a council want to allow our staff to continue to do this research and bring back more information, basically, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there anything else on that particular subject that anybody wants to talk about? Hearing, oh, sorry, Councilman Garner?
I just, I'm in full support of it. I grew up over there. Spent probably every waking minute in that, in those hills, riding four-wheelers. Me and Andrew used to ride up there. From grade school all the way to high school, spent almost all my time out there and it's a blast. And we did four-wheelers, bikes, dirt bikes. I mean, so it's, it's perfect for it. I think it's a great idea, so I just wanted to say thanks and look forward to seeing more.
Okay, is there anything more before we vote? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with five days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to take like a 10-minute break. We'll be right, is that fine with everybody? Okay, we normally do it at nine o'clock, but we're close. So we'll take like a 10-minute break.
If you look at that photo. If you go here and look at the photo.
Thank you.
Okay? And you look up pretty boundary lines of the outside of the city. There's the land.
Oh, I know, I know.
And the gun. So they're both, yeah, and this. Well, you can see that it is, you can see right here. But if this is a city, I think the city owns this. Which is what I think they do. They physically, they physically own the city. And it just makes me wonder what, what that has, how would that, how would that work here? If you just said we want to buy that. But, but, the connection.
It all depends on these.
Well, this is, these are going to touch each other, but you can't. The judge here is pretty sure that if you can, if you're going over there. So for me, I'm like, oh, you know, can we act, how can we get access to the people? This is all, all this ground, this is, I don't know. That's not, this is BLM. I think it's a great idea.
I, I agree.
Temperature. Have a little, a piece of wood in it. We don't want to, so you have high and low temperatures. But you have, and then the moisture melts and then. If you densify, we don't have to. You just take yours, you're out there and you take it. Like, it's actually a good idea to take about like five or six. And then you add it. And that's what they do.
The next meeting is the, it says, right? Hi Dad. Good.
It's an interesting concept because we have, we have chunks of property that are outside the rural city. But the entire golf course is outside the city.
Yes.
And it's only divided by that little chunk of land that goes through there. That the people in California want.
It's not city. It's a little square cut out of the whole city.
That's this beach house. That's this area right here that are running up and down. So this is all inside of city limits right here, but it's a straight line right there, and they're built right there. Just outside. But it's not the lock, this is private land. It's outside the city limit. This is the landfill. And that's the gun. There, there across this is BLM's land right here. So that log right there, well, this chunk right here is BLM's land. That's private land. I think that man is dark. And then this one here, I think is the branching cutting out of the thing. And then that one, and this one. And that branch in this area. And then it also sits outside of here. I think, I feel that we actually own this chunk of land that we, that we purchased, we purchased that. You know, because we do own, this is another, if you look at the bottom of this, this is now, this is, this is right here, private land. But within corporate city limits, it's in Rollins. That goes all the way down.
Can I just take the land and mark each piece?
Well, we don't have a license as to mark, because we haven't got fishing on. We started that like eight years ago. So, yeah, there's...
I mean, that's the reason why it's so mismatched. Take a piece, give a piece, take a piece, give a piece.
And this whole area right here. I think this is the last area site on the council. We have like a 950 property here, 96, right here. Senior site. Park is right there? That's it. Yeah. We moved it. We traded it. We took it.
But you have a tree to do that?
No. Nobody in the city knew that it was. And you had, you have your frisbee. Things are infected. So every part of it was basically ours. And so we traded a piece of property for the one that's right behind Kathy Gardner. There was a piece of property. To get to our thing. So we traded for this piece of property. We traded for this piece of property by two of the people. No, it didn't have anything to do with the movie. So we said, okay, we'll get it back to you because you need the access to the road. And we're going to go back into that area over there. And we need access to it. Let's just do it. And then we've been through back and forth about a piece of ground behind. Sheriff's Department. And it's just, it's the one that seems so incredibly, the one that seems so incredibly obvious to me. He comes to us and says, things that may have been, what's your, your decision? What does he say? That's the first. In the middle, and you're going to take care of it. Now, why don't you? Um, yes and no. No, it's just that number was pursued at the rate that it should have been pursued at. There was, there was a couple of different grants that were involved in that grant. Last one.
Relying on some great. That's fine.
No.
That was a big part of the tradition. It was this big.
Right.
Perfect. And so you're going to sell your.
Dirt.
Dirt.
That's, that. Because the movie generated from this area to wherever it had to go was. Yeah, and so we're like, if we can just push it over there, is it okay?
Okay, everybody ready? All right, it's nine twenty-five, we'll call this meeting back to order. The next thing on our agenda is discussion of code of ethics. This was asked for by Kendra Cisneros. So I would turn the floor over to you Kendra. And there was no paperwork come with it, so I have no idea what we're gonna be discussing.
I am here to discuss before you why I think it's imperative that we have a code of ethics for the city council. It needs to be strict and enforced sooner rather than later. Little history, how did I get here? At the end of last year, there was a social media post by a respected businesswoman in town. Though I had, did not know her personally, had never spoken to her personally. I knew her reputation as being honest and doing good things for our community. When she made a plea on social media for the public to help with a problem she was having with the city council. I thought, I'm going to watch this meeting and see what this is all about. I was appalled and shocked by the council's treatment of the public. Not just for her issues, but how the public was treated by some council members. As I watched horrified that these people who are making decisions for our community could talk to or rather yell at the very public that had voted them in. With egos and abuse flying rampant, I kept thinking someone is going to shut this down somehow. Nope, nothing. This continued on from meeting after meeting. At one of the meetings, I did hear a councilman try to shut down the abuse. He also brought into question where a code of ethics he had proposed had previously gone. From there, I inquired upon this code of ethics. I was told the council has to abide by the state's code of ethics. Which I have read more than once. This code of ethics doesn't cover Rollins specifically. It covers state elected officials mostly. The councilman's code of ethics was from Casper, which was discussed as not fitting for Rollins. So the attorney was looking at a Laramie one, which was proposed by another council member. So why if Casper's doesn't fit Rollins, would the state be pushed to fit Rollins when it isn't specific for municipalities? That's how I got here. First, I'd like to talk about the why. Why do businesses, corporations, and organizations have a code of ethics? Why should Rollins City Council have a defined, strict, enforceable code of ethics with teeth? For a few reasons. First of all, we can even go to our constitution. Even our forefathers were smart enough to make sure our federal government was not in complete power and put limitations on that power. We, the people and all. Because the constitution is for federal level government, our state follows Dillon's rules as of nineteen seventy-two. So we do have guidelines to create these ethics for a policy. Second is public trust. The general public doesn't trust a government that doesn't feel regulated. Yes, we all know the state has a code of ethics that our council's supposed to follow. But does this actually support the reasoning for Rollins to have a Rollins-specific city council code of ethics? Again, the state of Wyoming's code of ethics is specific to their needs, citing ethics for state-level elected officials. It does not lay out guidelines or rules for municipalities with consequences for unethical behavior. It provides a foundation to protect both the community and the elected officials. This is a foundation that we could build upon by all municipalities in regards to their own communities and standards that meet the public's expectations. A former council member stated during a council meeting discussion that they didn't want the ethics code to have teeth because it would tie their hands. Tie their hands how? To be decent, to be held accountable for their actions? Elected officials are held to a higher standard. As an elected official, ethics should always be your top priority. There should never be even the slightest doubt in the public's mind about having trust in who they elect. You're being watched by the community even more now as things are tense and there appears to be a war going on. You are under a constant microscope. The public places their trust in you by casting their vote. They expect results, and part of these results are in your behavior. It is completely unacceptable for a council member, an elected official, to treat their public who has voted them in with any type of aggressive behavior. If you cannot control your temper and rule with a level head, you should not be sitting up there in that seat. If you are a hothead, a bully, an egomaniac that believes you were voted in to be God, you should not be in that seat. I have watched council members abuse community members and other council members meeting after meeting. I have re-watched meetings and witnessed egos prevail before and above the reason you were elected. The council seat you sit on is a job. A job. You are here for a job. You were hired by the community. If you were to sit in any other job and treat your bosses with abuse, contempt, dismissal of discussion, you would be fired. Third is professionalism. Holding a seat of elected official requires professionalism. Sit up in your seat, look at people who are addressing you, at least pretend to care about our community and the members in it. Treat your fellow council members with the respect they deserve for being here with you, making decisions for our community. The way you treat others will reflect into us, will absorb it, and it just might come back the same. Right now, aggression is breeding aggression. I watched one of the council meetings when the vice mayor was in charge. There were very angry citizens in the audience, from the Glen addition, I believe, who wanted answers and to confront what they felt was wrong with the city. The vice mayor calmly sat there, listened to their concerns, let them talk out of order, yell from the back, talk over each other. And not one time did he humiliate or degrade any person in this room. There were even people who ended up apologizing to him at the end of that meeting for being out of order. If this doesn't show you what you put out you will get back, I don't know what will. This was not what we were used to. You are going to have angry people who come in here and do not agree with you. They're not gonna agree with the decisions that you make, especially if their needs are not being met. They have every right to be angry. It's your job to deflate situations and de-escalate them calmly. When people don't feel heard and they have no voice, where do we go? In a technology age? To social media. Professionalism also resides outside of these chambers. When you make the decision to run for office or any elected office, you choose to hold yourself to that higher standard. There's also council trust. Each and every one of you as council members should feel safe. You should feel heard and have the ability to represent your wards, the voices of the people coming to you with concerns or ideas. If another council member doesn't practice ethical behavior in their position and uses unethical means to strong-arm the others, there is no safety. This also defeats the purpose of you being there, to represent the public, not your own agendas. It's super fun to go out and meet with higher-level government officials and rub elbows with them and run around telling everybody you know so-and-so. But you are actually here to represent us. Being on the council isn't all roses and sunshine. I would guess that most of your jobs are dirty. Dealing with upset community members because you can't make everyone happy all the time. But as a member of the community, I have questions. I want and demand answers to them. I hear all the time from others, well, I emailed them and haven't received a response from anyone, that's unacceptable. Why was a controversial person voted in by the council to serve as the mayor with what was being asked on social media by the community? Why did council disregard so many people's requests to have a neutral member sit in that seat? What was the purpose of this? Personal agendas have no place up there. When you're up against a tough, angry community, think about this. If there was a voting process to remove you from that seat, would your actions lead to removal? Would you still be here? That's all I have.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is approval of the payroll, I would entertain a motion.
Are you, are you gonna open it for discussion or for council? And public?
I can. Do you have something you'd like to say?
I did have a question.
Okay.
You made a comment right before this started that you weren't sure what was gonna be discussed. I spoke with Mrs. Cisneros on Friday about her being on the agenda. She was not aware she was gonna be on the agenda, she was not notified of this discussion she was to be the presenter for. Is there a reason she was not aware? I'm just curious.
I, I don't know what her. The reason she wasn't aware, but at the end of the last meeting, towards the end of it, she insisted that she be put on the agenda. And what the subject was gonna be. And I did exactly what she asked me to do.
Did we follow up?
And say what? No, I told her that night, you will be, I will put you on the agenda.
That is not.
I, I, I told her.
I was sitting right here, and that's exactly what he said.
That's an actual thing too, yes.
So.
Excuse us folks, we can't hear you, you need to talk closer to the speaker so we can hear what you say.
Sorry.
So the answer to his question was, I was sitting right here, that's exactly what she said. That's what he said.
So was she notified that she was on the agenda though?
He told her right then.
I'm asking, was she notified after that?
I did notify her by saying, I will put you on the agenda with the subject of ethics. I told her I would.
Okay.
I, I was heard by several people. I turned and I, I don't know whether I told Lynn or I told. I told Lynn, make sure to put her on the agenda with her standing beside me.
Can you, Kendra, can you clarify the confusion? You're fine there.
You're fine from there.
I asked to be put on the agenda. Mayor Wycombe did say that he would get me on the agenda, he was looking to getting me on the agenda. But I was supposed to get with Lynn that next week, and I never did.
I, I don't know why you felt you had to be, get with Lynn.
That's what I was told.
By who?
When we were having the discussion, I went to her, I asked Myra in the hall, how do I get on the agenda? She said to speak to the attorney, so I came in to speak to the attorney who directed me to Lynn. Lynn said, you have to confirm that through the mayor. I said, I will confirm it right after we discuss, here is my name and email address, to get ahold of me, turned around to you and said that. And then one of you said that there would be a confirmation for me after that week because I had to give her my email address. I never received the email.
Well.
Wrote down my name, because I had to spell my email address.
I, I can just tell you, you asked to be put on the agenda. I did, I, I did exactly what you asked me to do. I put you on the agenda with, under the subject of code of ethics. I, while you were standing there, I turned to, I believe it was Lynn, who goes over the agenda with myself and the vice mayor. And I said, make sure that gets on the agenda. And that's how we got here today, Councilman Garner.
The reason I bring this up is just to avoid this for future because I think if we're gonna put somebody on the agenda, we need, they just need to have a ver. I'm looking for a verification process so that they know. I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just trying to clear this up so we don't have a repeat.
Our, our agenda is published online and several other places.
But the presenter's not listed on our agenda until you get into board docs and actually click the discussion?
But it was put on the agenda as she asked. Councilman Lumen?
I think this particular situation is just a bit of confusion.
Yeah.
I think she was looking for confirmation through an email that she, yes, you are on the agenda, yes, you're going to be able to speak. I think on your side, you felt you already told her, yes, you're going to be on the agenda. Just a matter of confusion. And I think what Councilmember Garner is looking for is, in the future, if somebody's told that they're gonna be on the agenda, maybe follow up with an email. That's all.
Just clarification.
I guess I'm old school verbal. If I tell you, see you Friday at three thirty, that I don't have to send you an email, I, I'll meet you at three thirty on Friday, you know? I said, she asked to be on the agenda and what the subject would be. I agreed to do that. And I did it. I, I guess we'll have to pay more attention next time, but that's how that went, just so you know. Any further discussion on that? Okay, next thing on our agenda is approval of the payroll. Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three through March eleventh, twenty twenty-three payroll register for two hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three through March eleventh, twenty twenty-three payroll register in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand and eight dollars and fifteen cents. Is there any discussion?
Two hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
What did I say?
Nine, three.
I'm, okay. Two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and eight dollars and fifteen cents. Thank you for the correction. Is there any further corrections or discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with five yes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is approval of accounts payable, Councilman Oweisenberg?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable register for the period of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with five yes. The motion passes with five days.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve a memorandum of understanding. Do I hear a motion? Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to recommend council approves the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Rochelle Animal Shelter and Wyoming Department of Corrections, WDOC.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to recommend council approval of the memorandum of understanding between Rochelle Animal Shelter and Wyoming Department of Corrections, WDOC. Is there any discussion? And Chief Ford, would you?
I'm the mayor and council, Mike Ford, with Rollins Police. I have with me Wyoming Department of Corrections Unit Manager Kristi Kelly. We were approached a while back, Rollins PD, which oversees the animal shelter, about joining a program with the Penn here in Rollins where specially selected dogs from the shelter would be sent out to the Penn to be trained by inmates who were also highly trained at training the dogs. We looked into this. We looked at the MOU. It's highly structured. This is a program that Wyoming DOC runs in Torrington, I believe Newcastle, and a number of other places with a high level of success. The benefit for the city is that it won't cost us anything more than if we had kept the animals at the shelter. It will also get the dogs out of the shelter and provide them with training that would make them more adoptable to the public. The benefit to the Penn is that this is a incredibly highly anticipated program inside the Penn. I understand it's one of the better paying programs. I understand that it is highly anticipated by the inmates themselves, even the ones not involved in the program, and the staff at the Penn. I'd like to ask Mrs. Kelly if she'll speak just briefly about that.
Hello, council. Just to give you a little example, where we'll be housing, the dogs will be in what we call K unit, which is our working unit. The inmates that we have there are all medium, minimum restricted, or minimum inmates. And so, we pretty much run the facility. We have the kitchen, the laundry. The inmates that come out of that unit go down and work in the outside work crew. So, they have to be six months disciplinary free. They cannot have any STG affiliations. There's some other things that go into being housed there. So, it's kind of the honor area unit for us at WSP. And so, we will have eight handlers that will go through the training. We have one that's already a master handler. He went up to Torrington and went through the six-month training, became a master handler, and he'll be training the other inmates on this. So, our goal is to have up to eight dogs there at the facility. It will be a nine-week program, and then we'll rotate the animals through as they complete and bring new ones in. So, the program for them for training is going to be six months. And during... after the first six weeks, the inmates will receive their first dog, and then they'll train the dogs. And then before they could graduate from the program and be certified handlers, they'll have to have trained at least three of the dogs. The sitters will also have assigned, and they will also have to go through the six-month program to even be sitters. So, they may not have an opportunity to be a handler, but if they go through the training as a sitter, when something opens, they'll be able to advance through that. So, it is something that the inmates and staff are really looking forward to, and having it changes the demeanor there in the unit. And they don't want to do things that they're not supposed to do in order to keep that program there. So, it's a real incentive for them to have that.
Thank you.
One or two more thoughts really quickly. The Penn is obviously an important part of the Rollins community. A constant theme, and we work closely with them, and I know the warden, the deputy warden, and a number of employees, they consider themselves part of the community, and they are proud of the opportunities they have to give back to Rollins. My understanding is that both the employees of the Penn and the inmates view that this program as something that gives back to Rollins.
I can tell you, I used to train hunting dogs. Very therapeutic, I got to tell you. I worked in a nursing home when I was a very young man, and there was a dog. I don't know who even... I don't even know who's it was, but it would show up and go room to room and light up everybody's eyes. It was an awesome thing. My brother-in-law worked with a horse program in St. Joseph's Orphanage, or it's not really an orphanage anymore, in Torrington. And it's very good on both sides. And I really applaud you for doing this and bringing this program. I had a lot of work releasers when they had that program, work for either the company I worked for or my companies, and it makes better people. And so, I think this is an incredible program to have, just so you know. Vice Mayor Sanger.
What does this do for the adaptability of the dog? At the end of their training, do they stay with the prison? Do they come back to the shelter?
No, they'll come back to the shelter. So, we'll be working with the shelter during this time. So, we'll go down and we'll pick the dogs and make sure they don't have any aggression in nature, and then we're going to match the dog with a handler. And so, they'll go through, and then they'll be trained for that period of time, and they'll be able to be certified as a canine good citizen. They'll have... They'll come out. The dogs will come out with a certificate of being trained in the canine good citizen. And I'll continue to work, and we'll have another representative, Mr. Smith, with this program with the shelter. And the inmates, part of this is journaling, and so they'll journal the progression of the dog. And then when they're adopted out, that family, whoever takes the animal, will be able to know exactly how, like the commands and what they do, and the different tricks that they'll be taught and stuff. So, we'll work with the shelter on putting stuff out prior. They'll get a midterm kind of report of how the dog is doing and what's going on. And then a couple of weeks before the dog is going to graduate from the program, then we'll work with the animal shelter about getting them out to the community and letting them know this is what's going on. And they have a Facebook page, so I would assume that they're going to get that out on the Facebook page. One of the things that we have seen through the many years of this kind of program is it's usually staff that'll come in and take the dogs. We'll work with the city to want to adopt them because they'll see, and they pick their favorites, and they're like, "I want that one," and they'll get ahold of the shelter. But eventually, we'll phase out with staff, and the city will... But yeah, so the city will handle all of the adoption with them and work with the citizens if they want to adopt. I'd like to be able to get pictures and maybe some videos to the city during their training time so people can see. And my goal, and I hope that the city's goal is, is that that dog will be adopted before it's even done with the program. So, it's kind of like we're discharging out, and they're going to go in, get their certificate, and hit their families, and move on.
That's awesome. Councilman Weisenberg?
Thank you for answering. I mean, I was going to piggyback kind of onto that as what the city was planning on doing, but you as a state already added into what you are doing to push the city to do what needs to happen to, but...
Right. And if we need to, if a dog can't be adopted out, we'll have the capacity to keep it for longer if it needs to be. We've also seen with Torrington, sometimes the dogs will go out to families, and they don't adjust well, or they don't mesh, and who they work with will say, "Hey, can you take the dog back?" And they take them back, and if they need to be retrained, or if they need a little bit more time. But we're hoping with them being able to get the certificate and the canine good citizen that they'll go out and we'll be successful.
I want to say thank you because any program to help rehabilitate in aspects of this is a blessing, not only to the WD, Department of Corrections, the community that they reside in, everything else. I believe truly it allows for safer community and aspect in that things. And anything we could help with that, I think we should be able to do. I'm a strong supporter of this.
Anybody else? Hearing... Yes, sir.
I'm just going to stand up here. There's a show...
What's your name?
My name's Art Candy.
All right.
Okay? And there's a show on, it's called Pit Moles and Paroleys, and I'm telling you that it works. It makes those dogs adoptable, and it makes those inmates so they can get along with other people way better. So, it would be a really good thing for our city to do.
I agree. Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right. Thank you. Would you please open online voting?
Online voting is open.
Should send my dog out there.
I say that every day.
I'm just glad my no-family member is out there for adoption of it. I don't want any animals anymore.
Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five days.
Thank you for your consideration, and I'd like to thank Unit Manager Kristi Kelly for taking the time to be here.
Thank you. It is so appreciated. Thank you so much. All right. So, next thing on our agenda is Wyoming Association of Municipalities Voting Delegate for the summer convention under number F. We have... Let's see. We have to approve a voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate. And you know, this is a little bit confusing to me, just so you knew, because normally we have a voting delegate and one for the resolution committee, but it's all lumped into one. And...
Mayor?
Yes.
That's the way the WAM is doing it now. So, the first one will be for the resolution and going to all the other things. And then the alternate is in case the first one is not able to make it to that, and we can let them know even like a day before if the primary person is not able to make the resolution. But it does encompass the resolution, bylaw changes, everything.
Okay.
So, the first person is for...
Yeah.
They've changed the form a little.
Yeah. I don't... That's... I'll have to talk to them about that change. I'd like that change, but...
Sorry.
Because you can't be two places at once, and that's kind of what happens down there.
Yeah. I'm sorry. That's the way the form was...
Yeah.
Came from WAM.
So, what I'm going to... Well, we need to have a motion first, so I would entertain a motion. Shouldn't be discussing it without a motion.
Do you want us to insert names?
Well, I guess the way this is structured, we can do it this other way. I'm going to suggest that... Never mind. Let's just go for it. We can work that out. Councilman Garner?
Just a quick question. Would it be okay to ask if anybody would like to do this?
Absolutely. And for people that are planning or that are signed up to go to the summer association is myself, Councilman, Councilperson Lumen, Councilmember Garner, Councilmember Weisenberg. So, who all would like to be a voting member?
I was going to... I was going to ask if you would like to. And the reason I was going to ask is, from what I've seen in your three months here, I think you do a great job with taking notes, listening, asking the questions. And this might be... I know it's your first WAM event, but it might be something pretty exciting to do. Being... I've been to them. I've seen some of what they do, but I've not been involved with them. So, I was just curious.
I would not mind being an alternate voting delegate, but not the main, because as you said, this is going to be my first WAM.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I expressed interest in this. Councilman Martinez was actually our voting delegate on the resolution committee. I have sat in on the resolution committee with him in prior WAMS, and it's very interesting. So, I seen the process, understood the process, and I am interested in that to be our voting delegate after seeing that. I did not sit in on the legislative... Is that what it was, the legislative committee? Because as Mayor Wykam had stated, a lot of this stuff happens at the same time. Resolution committee and then the legislative committee or whatever it was at that point in time happened, like, right on top of each other. You couldn't even get from one to the other. Maybe the way that WAM is structuring this with a voting delegate and a alternate, maybe they're going to place them right with each other. Who knows? We don't know until we get there, obviously, but I've expressed the interest. Everybody's known that. I just want you to know I'm still interested.
Anybody else? You're one voter out of about 300 people in the room, so it isn't like a... You don't have like a hoop soup on the general floor. You don't have a super swing vote, but when they start talking about certain legislation they want to put forward and certain things that they want to do, I have a very robust background in all of that sort of thing. I understand what they're talking about. I would like to be the voting delegate, but I have no problem with, since they're doing it this way, to throw my support to Councilman Weisenberg and to you as the alternate. So, there you have it. So, do you need that in the form of a motion? You do. So, would like somebody like to make a motion at this time, or is there more discussion? Vice Mayor Sanger?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve Chris Weisenberg as the voting delegate and to move to approve Tanya Lumen as the alternate voting delegate for 2023 Wyoming Association of Municipalities Summer Convention Business Meeting held on Thursday, June 8, 2023, in Cody, Wyoming.
Second? Sir? Okay. I'm sorry. I changed pages here and keep grabbing my mouse that don't work, and that's a problem. The motion was made and seconded to designate Councilman Weisenberg as the voting delegate for the... And Tanya, Councilperson Lumen, for the 2023 Wyoming Association of Municipalities Summer Convention Business Meeting to make her the alternate voting delegate. This is held in June 8, 2023, in Cody, Wyoming. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
It is okay for us to vote also, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. You can vote for yourself, for sure. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five days.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
The next thing on our agenda is to authorize the city council to approve up to $2,500 for the purpose of council training. What this is, is... I don't think there's a motion on here.
There is. It's down. Recommended action.
Oh, okay. I don't see it.
Or a motion?
Councilman Weisenberg had your finger... Finger hand up first.
I move to authorize the city council to approve up to $2,500 for the purpose of council training.
Or?
Yes.
Should be for, right?
Yeah. For the purpose of council training.
No.
No, for... From... For who? Community Builders, Inc.
Oh, okay. Sorry. For the purpose of council training from Community Builders, Inc. Sorry. I was reading a second line or a different line. I was like, what?
Is there a second?
Yes. Sorry.
Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to authorize the city council to approve up to $2,500 for the purpose of council training from the Community Builders, Inc. Is there any discussion? And I will tell you all what it's about, is we went to the... And I will tell you all what it's about is we went to the training that WAM put on and not everybody could go. And it was just incredible training. And it was put on by Mark Harris, who is an attorney for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities. And another person, Joe Coyne, who is a principal consultant with this Community Builders Inc. They also talked about, when my conversation with Joe, was that he was going to try to get a person from the Department of Audit to come, give us some of the training that we are going to absolutely have to have by the middle of 2024 or resign our positions. And we got most of that out, most of us got that out of the way when we were in Cheyenne. But for those that didn't, this training is very, very important. It's, it's, it's ethics, it's how to run a meeting, it's, it's all the things we need to know to be council people. And so I asked WAM, first of all, if it was even possible to talk to these folks and possibly get them here. And they said it would be totally up to these guys. They're basically contractors or whatever. So the first person I talked to was Mark Harris. And he said that he would love to do it and that he would talk to Joe Coyne. Well, Joe sent me a letter that I think is proposal here. I sent it on and it is at the bottom of your tablet there as to what it will do. And basically $2,000 of this money will be for some wages for Joe and travel and, and how, not housing, but travel and accommodations. And, and then Mark Harris is not asking for wages, but the other to be paid for. So that's what the 2,000 is for and I thought 500 would be good to have for, you know, refreshments, that sort of thing. Along these lines, there are a lot of, of towns around us that they did not have all their council go to this training also. And we were at Cog the other night. I, I, if you'll notice in, there's just so many things here. If you'll notice in that proposal, he talks about having, trying to keep the limit to 30 people in the room. I believe that can happen because we do have other councils around that would love to send their people to this training also. I think it would be a really good olive branch on the part of Rollins to not charge these folks for us to put this on and not to charge some of these smaller towns to ha, send their people to this training. We, it, what they're going to go over is ethics and integrity, government operations, rules and responsibility, strategic planning, financial management, municipal budget, community and economic development. They're not going to do any of these things for us, but they're going to tell us the principles involved. And they're, it, it's pretty incredible training. So with that being said, if we do happen to pass this, and I hope we do, then the first thing we'll need to do is make sure that the three people that didn't get the opportunity to go to this training in Cheyenne would be available to go to it. Because other than, otherwise it'd be kind of silly for us to take it again. But with that said, there is so much information coming at you. I don't mind sitting through it in its entirety again. So that's, that's basically what I have worked on to get lined up. And I've had help from Wendy to do this with and, and of course Lynn. And in working with these guys, this is to me a golden opportunity to, and if we can get the guy from the, the state assessor to involve or the audit, the Department of Audit to go in on this with them, it'll be a full day's worth of training. But then we'll have our training and we'll be the first city in Wyoming that's all certified council people. So yet another first, a chance for some incredible training. And with that, I will ask if there's any questions. Wendy?
I'd just like to make one clarification for the record. We are not actually contracting with Community Builders Inc. The city has had legal action between us and Community Builders. What this is, is Community Builders is one of the sponsors. And Joe Coyne is a member of Community Builders, but is not representing them for this training. They are one of the sponsors. So very slight.
Sure.
Clarification, but I wanted to have that clear.
So what you're saying is we're hiring two people?
That is correct.
Just period. Mark Harris and Joe Coyne?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do we need to amend a motion?
Yeah, we probably do to subtract out that language.
So I'd make a friendly moment, amendment to subtract out the Community Builders Inc. And just add in Mark Harris and Joseph Coyne as the trainers in that.
Did I second?
Yes. Second, yeah.
And then we'll have to work on scheduling if it passes, but is there anything else?
I just have one comment. If we're going to have the other councils here as well and it's a, a training, not really a, a discussion type thing, but a, a training for, specifically for city council members. Is there a way we can make it just for city council members, not the public, but have it broadcasted so the public still has access to it?
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because that was also discussed about exactly that. So we don't have, you know, pe, people making noise, yelling things in the back of the room and, and all those sort of things. It will be, my plan is anyway, council members only, teachers only and some staff, of course.
But still broadcast.
But, but not the public, but we, and I did clear it with both of these guys because sometimes they're funny about that. I, I told them my, my intention was to put it on Zoom or whatever, YouTube, Facebook, whatever, so that the public and, and advertise it heavily so that the public will watch it. Because I think they will also learn about what our job is and is not and, and our capabilities and such like that. So I'm glad you brought that up because that is a very important part of making this really successful.
Good.
Any further discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, I was just kind of curious and I'm a for this for, for sure. It was a great training. I just want to make it clear, do we need to make it known that where the 2,500 is coming out of? Or is it fine? Just, it's just going to come out of a council budget and? Okay.
The budget source line item is actually on the item.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I say it now?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please open online voting?
Online voting is open.
I keep grabbing that mouse, man.
Set it behind you.
Battery still dead.
Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five days.
All right. Thank you. And this will be well worth it. The other thing, if you will read down into that, the letter from Joe describing this, he asked that we send a, a letter with dates that we would like to have it scheduled. So I don't know really how to do that other than maybe just send a list of dates that work and don't work for each one of you. Does that make sense? And then we'll try to figure that out and then we'll probably have a couple of rounds of that. But that's, that's what we need to do. Yes, sir.
Just real quick, I, I just wanted to point this out. It was, this was kind of discussed at the WAM meeting on Monday night, last night, right?
Yeah.
About what was going to be presented and I'm glad it passed. I appreciate it. But the thing, the thing is, is this will be the light that WAM needs to, to move forward to, to show that there is need for coming into communities and, and offering other trainings too besides just a convention. And this will help them out too.
Okay. Now let's see. I've changed pages again. Oh, my goodness. I hate this no mouse thing. All right. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up while we're here? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting and our next meeting is?
April 4th.
April 4th.
April 4th.
And there will be a work session.
Okay. Thank you all.
Just a quick reminder, there is also the joint meeting between our council and the Sinclair Council at 5:30 PM this Thursday, the 23rd. At the Sinclair Town Hall.
Okay. And Steve, you probably won't be there, will you?
No, I'll be getting my heart worked on.
Well, we'll be praying for you, buddy.
We're going to go in and see if it's there.
Well, I'm glad to know you have one.
I, I, according to some people, I don't.
We're just going to go check and make sure.
You better not have heart problems because they.